In accordance with Governor Baker's Declaration of June 16, 2021, granting certain pandemic-related authorizations related to the public board and town meetings, and recently extended until March 31, 2023, this meeting will be conducted both in person and virtually via Google Meets. The meeting may be recorded by SMAC cable television and broadcast live and may be livestream at www.stoughton.tv.org. A recording of the meeting, transcript, or other comprehensive record of the proceedings will be posted on the town's website and/or SMAC as soon as possible after the meeting if live broadcast or livestreaming is unsuccessful. Times are approximate, and items may be taken out of order at the chair's discretion. And I did verify that the Governor Baker's declaration is still in effect. Thank you. We'll move right along to Select Board comments. Are there any Select Board comments? Mr. McChrisky.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Nothing pressing, just wanted to congratulate the town manager, Tom Coulter, on his whirlwind tour since last week. He has had Mark Tisdale at his side and really changing the face of how things work here. So it's nice that things are happening and some of Mark's ideas getting implemented. Tom has already brought Mark in as a team member, and I think we're going to see some great things. So thank you both for what you're getting done.
That would be a partner, Mr. Chairman.
I'm sorry?
Mr. McChrisky, that would be Tisdale, the partner.
The partner. I did say a partner. I did say that. Teammate, okay, I'm sorry. Partner. Is it like the odd couple partner, though? I don't know. Okay. But no, thank you. It's great. It's great to see, and a lot of positive comments coming out, which is a great thing. Also, for those of you who know, I talk quite a bit about trash in streets, trash on sidewalks, and there's just so much that needs to be done in the town. Some of it's our own residents, leaving trash on streets, in sidewalks, putting things out in the trash that are clearly not in the waste stream. The DPW has been doing a superb job of, for the first time in our history, putting warning tags on things left behind out in front of the yards, whether it be metal items that they're supposed to call for a pickup, mattresses that we cannot pick up in the waste stream now, which is a new thing. But just generally cleaning up the town, and it's changing out there, folks. A lot of people, as you see it, and probably get calls like I do, I know I get more than the average person, but they're making a hell of a difference. And I just wanted to say here from this table, thanks to Paul Jaffoon and his staff, and Mr. Town Manager, Mark, if you would follow that comment up to Paul personally and his men and women over there that are doing a bang-up job. But we've got more that has to be done. And in closing, Madam Chair, I just wanted to take this opportunity to wish all of my friends that celebrate Christmas a very Merry Christmas, Happy Safe New Year, my Jewish friends who are celebrating Hanukkah. And I don't know all the holidays of everybody in the town, and I apologize if I don't, but whichever holiday that you celebrate, I wish you a very happy holiday season and well as your families for a Happy Safe New Year as well. And I just looked at Lena. Got to say again publicly, Madam Chair, Mr. Town Manager, Mark Tisdale, Lena, keep doing what you're doing. In the short time that you've been here, you've really just taken to this so well. And it's difficult. Yeah, she's saying, yeah, right, I'm giving my notice. That's what she's thinking right now.
Oh, no.
But no, it's different when you're new, and unfortunately, you don't get too much on the job training. It's like a bird's nest here. The mother throws the baby out of the nest, you fly or die. And it could be like that at times, and especially during the permitting process. So again, Lena, thank you. You're doing a superb job, and thank you for your efforts. Thank you, Madam Chair.
You're quite welcome. Are there any other Select Board comments? Oh. Yes, Mr.?
Wish everybody the same thing. Happy New Year, I mean Happy Holidays and Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah. Joe took care of everything else.
Anyone else? All right. We'll keep it moving right along, and we'll say our celebratory remarks at the very end. Town Manager comments.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a few comments and one point of business. I've spent the last eight days meeting with every member of the management team, the department heads in the town of Stoughton, and I must say that I couldn't be more impressed with the attitude, the optimism, the commitment to do the will of the people and to serve this Board of Selectmen as I've met with these people. And I want to tell you a funny story, and I hope Lena doesn't stop talking to me after this. As I met with Lena, you forgive me already, I said, "Well, I'd like to learn about everybody personally and professionally, so before we talk about your job, can you tell me about your family?" And she said, "Tom, I don't talk about my private life until I'm comfortable." I said, "I respect that." And then she came in Friday and says, "I'm comfortable. I've got a daughter."
Is that true, Lena? Tell me about her daughter.
So I just wanted to, again, tell you how pleased I am with the reception I've received, the professionalism of the staff here, and they know how to laugh and have fun and then get their work done. And that's so important. The next thing I'd like to say on a more, perhaps, sad note is, last week, the town of Stoughton had a horrific, horrific week with tragedies.
Wait, just a second.
I'm sorry. Microphone somewhere. Oh, thank you. And I had the opportunity to watch our police and fire and EMS folks in action.
I can hear you, Doris.
And I got to tell you something. I represented six towns in the Massachusetts Legislature and got to know their EMS, their police, their fire extremely well. We are blessed to have the level of professionalism, commitment, and frankly, the courage that they needed in both of those situations. And as Chief McNamara would tell you, the person who is suspected of committing that gruesome killing or murder, if I may, has been captured in New York, and the Stoughton detectives followed him to New York and then to Georgia and then back to New York. And they knew where he was every moment until they were able to get the drop on him. Those are our police officers. Those are our detectives. We should be very proud of that. The car accident was horrific, and our EMS and firemen, it required four hours to take the victim out of the car. They displayed such professionalism and commitment to getting the job done, and I just wanted to recognize them because it's, they're two organizations that just do their work quietly and courageously and need to be recognized occasionally for the type of work they do. So I hate to bring up sad moments, but the town's response through those organizations was just extraordinary and should be noted. Last thing, Madam Chair, I intend to, next Thursday, travel around for eight hours to every building in the town to look at the condition and to get inside each building. And one of the ones that's right in front of us is the railroad station. And so I approached Select Board Member McChrisky and asked him if he would take the lead in evaluating the cost and the usage of that building. And so through the Board, through you, Madam Chair, to the Board, I'd like an affirmative vote of asking Mr. McChrisky if he would put in some more valuable time to evaluate the cost and the potential uses of that building. I've spoken with Joe. He knows that money's tight right now. It's not in the capital budget, but we've got a lot of ways of raising money for the good of the town. And if it's the will of the Board, I'd like Joe to be a representative of the town manager as we evaluate the opportunities and the cost of bringing that building back online or other alternatives. And we hope to do that with every building. So through you, Madam Chair, if, I think we require a vote to have a representative of the town manager to pursue that type of task, is that appropriate?
And it's a good practice, too.
Okay.
I'm open for a motion. So what is the Board's wish?
Motion would be through the town manager to our chairman, Deborah Roberts, to allow Mr. McChrisky to take the lead in the train depot costs and uses for best practices.
And could I get a second?
Would it also be for other town buildings as well?
He's only volunteered for the first one.
Got it.
For any building that's not occupied, I would hope that we can make this committee larger with professionals to evaluate the buildings, the potential usage, and the cost to bring them up to standard. Joe's the only volunteer I've been able to hook so far.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well.
Thank you.
A unanimous decision.
And Madam Chair, in the future, I'll bring the motion that I would propose when I do these things in the future.
Thank you very much. That would be helpful.
That's all for me. Thank you.
Madam Chair, very quickly?
Yes, Mr. McChrisky.
Very quickly, just wanted to let you know and the Board members at first. Town Manager, thank you. This started with talking to Mr. Tisdale briefly a while back, and Mr. Tisdale showed me that the study that we had done and for the, what the residents wanted to see for the building, and I believe Mark, 61% wanted it as a town-owned building that could be used for many issues. And this is what I had mentioned years ago, 2015, when I was working on that, is to make it a building that everybody can use. We had the little theater pop up and really wants to step up to the plate as well. So my beginning act is working with Paul Jaffoon, the buildings manager, to get the power put back on, which is in the process, but it needs to be pushed a little bit, and to get the burner working and settle up with the men's room. Paul says there's some money in the budget still, so we should be able to accomplish that and get it so it's functional. Sat down with what I have done, those of you who remember, for about seven years, I ran the events committee in the town, and just started going over different events, and we had done that was successful and others that we wanted to do and never made it. But basically, I could show you here in this book 91 different ideas that can be used for that building. And one of the major components will be the little theater because Jan Jones is a Stoughton treasure, and we can do so much. So we'll get going on that, and I'll keep everybody up to date, as well the town manager, and see what we can do to get this. I'd like to see it so we can use it in the winter, so we can get it buttoned up, get some heat in there, and one restroom, because once we start getting in too deep, we're going to have to pay prevailing wage, and then if we do so much ADA compliance, but we just want to get things up and running so it's functional. So again, to the town manager, thanks for your trust. I appreciate it, and we'll have some fun.
Mr. McChrisky, this is a wonderful opportunity for you to prove yourself, and we know you'll do your best and make us proud.
I'll make you proud, but I can tell you, there'll be some people complaining, too. I'll tell you that. Guarantee it.
Oh, my goodness. Okay. So if there are no other Select Board comments, we'll move right along to citizens' comments. With there being none, it is now 7:49. Public hearing starts in five minutes. And I would like to ask our town clerk, Stephanie Carrera, would you need more than five minutes because we do have a?
I think we can do it.
In five?
Yep.
Okay. Well, in that case, using the chair's discretion, I will take item number...
Seven.
Seven out of order. And we'll do it now. Item number seven, while they're setting up, item number seven is licensing approval process. So please state your name and your title.
Thank you, Madam Chair. My name is Stephanie Carrera, and I'm the town clerk for the town of Stoughton. And this person sitting next to me is my assistant, Kelly Johnson. And we are just here just to let the Board know some information that we met with our town manager, and we're going to be reorganizing the licensing procedure to make it even more streamlined. And by that, we're going to be centralizing the licensing in our office. So we will do everything from A to Z, and once the packet is complete, that is when we will bring it to the Board, or give it, excuse me, give it to Lena to give to the Board. And we feel that this is a more cleaner way to do this. It's one location instead of going to two different departments. And my assistant, Kelly, has been working really hard on it. We've been doing things together, and we wanted to just bring a few pointers to the Board. We're using a tracking system. We actually, we created a Google Sheet, and different departments have access to this. So if it needs to go to the engineering office, and we need to know if it's on septic or sewer, they can go right up on the Google Sheet, type in the information, and we check it daily so that we can assist the businesses in the town of Stoughton. And currently, we have 113 that we've been working with. 94 are complete and correct for the Board to look at, to sign, and go forward with. We have currently 17 that are not in compliance, and we will continue to work with those 17 businesses and assist them on the documentation that they need, or if they have to go to a department to speak to someone to get some more guidance, we will be working with them. Also, we will not present anything to this esteemed Board without, if it's not correct, if it's not complete. We feel that we're not going to waste your time saying, "Well, this pile is, you know, all set. This pile is the incomplete ones." We will continue to email you, as we do once a month, our reports, so that you know what's in compliance, what isn't in compliance. And we had Lena put up our Google Sheet, and I'm going to let my assistant, Kelly Johnson, go over it, as she's in it more than I am, and I think that you'll be pleasantly surprised.
Thank you, Stephanie. Hi. So I created this sheet to help maintain all the licenses with all the contact information and the daily changes that happen within businesses. Throughout the year, I update everything through contacts, change of managers, anything that has changed within the business. Every renewal period, I send it out to every department, and it's divided by classification of the license in each sheet, and then it has numerous columns, and each department has a column that they can put any issues or simply just put okay, and that they're ready to move forward for the renewal process of the calendar year. It has great features, just that everyone can stay connected, everyone can just know what's going on with that one business, and that's really about it.
Madam Chair, may I?
Yes.
I just want to say briefly, because I know we're up against the clock. Stephanie and Kelly took on this challenge a week ago to centralize everything in one department. They say that people in public service don't respond well to change. They not only responded quickly to this change, they embraced it, and they've been excited about it. And they're committed to this simple rule. We will bring nothing to the Board that's incomplete or not true to the best of our knowledge, so that you don't have to go through every file individually. We're giving you our word. We've done that, and it's complete and it's accurate. And they have also committed, as they both stated, to work as a business-friendly community with the 17 remaining applications until we can get them to yes. Final point, the department heads have embraced this sheet where they're filling in the blanks at a regular basis, sometimes at Kelly's urging, but so we know that we've got everything in place. So everything now will stay self-contained within the clerk's office, which is our chief licensure office. And I would call this a real success on their part, and I'm very proud of both of them.
I would agree. It's more efficient. So thank you so very, very much for doing that, bringing this process to fruition for us. Does the Board have any questions? Oh, yes, Mr. Carrera.
The only question I have is, when you send something out to the other department heads, do you have a turnaround time, or is it going to be hanging?
When a new applicant comes in, I generally give them a week, week, week and a half to respond, and then I start with the reminder emails.
Thank you.
So I believe we'll see you a little bit later, too, on the next agenda item. So thank you so much for sharing.
I don't want anyone to think that I'm going back with some time. I just felt, I want to say, "Spidey."
Be careful.
I wanted to say "Spidey," but I just spent my time on Christmas.
I liked my story better than he pushed you.
No.
You got new ski boots. What do you want?
So we'll move right along. We'll take consent agenda out of order and go right to the public hearings. And I just wanted to talk a little bit about our process first because it's new to all of you, so we want to make sure that you know in what direction we're going. So the first thing we'll do is read into the record the hearing. So that's the advertisement. Then we'll motion, I'll accept a motion to open the public hearing. Then we'll take a vote to open that public hearing. We'll hear a little bit about the background from Vice Chair Cavie. Then the guests will tell us why they're actually here. Then the Select Board members will ask questions of the representative for the business. And then the citizens will have an opportunity to also ask the representative questions. The Select Board may have more questions for you. And then the representative will have their closing remarks or closing statement. And then I'll accept a motion to close the public hearing. The Select Board will deliberate, will take a vote, and that motion will be to grant the request, yes or no. And we'll take the vote, and that's the way it will be. So with that said, the first on our list is the application for all alcohol and common vic license, doing business as Avocados. Is there a mo... Oh, I'm sorry. Vice Chair Cavie to read it into the record?
Town of Stoughton, notice for hearing. A public hearing will be held by the Select Board on December 20, 2022, to consider the application of Cuniet Incorporated, doing business as Avocados Mexican Restaurant, for the application of all alcohol license and common vic lawyer license at 809 Washington Street, Stoughton, Massachusetts, 02072. Hearing will be held at 7:55 PM. The hearing will be conducted at the Great Hall, third floor, Town Hall 10 Pearl Street, Stoughton, Massachusetts, and via Google Meets, and may be broadcast via Stoughton Media Access Television and livestream. Google Meets video link and telephone connection for public comment available by calling the Select Board Office at 781-341-1300, extension 9212, or email to lwilson@stoughton-ma.gov by 4:00 PM, the day of the meeting, per order of Deborah C. Roberts, Chair, Select Board acting as the licensing authority.
Motion to open the public hearing?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
And I vote aye as well. Vice Chair Cavie?
We've received feedback from all of our departments, the police, fire, building, Port of Health, Treasury, and Water. All have no objections to this application.
Will the representative step forward, state your name and your affiliation with Avocados Restaurant? Either or. You could sit. I think the microphone is working, and you can just pull up a chair if you like. Be comfortable. I think those, if you wanted to sit a little bit closer, sir, you can...
Yeah, they detach, but it takes a... Yeah, there you go.
Yeah, that's it. Great. Thank you.
Please, you have to just turn the mic on.
Push that.
There you go.
All set? Perfect. Good evening. I'm attorney Jennifer Allen, and I represent Kenyon Inc., doing business as Avocados Mexican Restaurant. I have the owners, Roberto and Mierna, are here with me. This is an application for a new downtown all alcohol liquor license for the restaurant located at 809 Washington Street. As you already know, or possibly know, my clients recently took over the restaurant. There was previously a liquor license at this restaurant for over a decade. Thus, a public need has already been demonstrated at this location. My clients have a five-year lease with options for renewal, which they already have the restaurant up and running with those required permits. I know a copy of the lease was also included in the application package. Roberto has been one of the owners of Mariachi's in Easton, and also in the restaurant business for over two decades, and is excited to bring some new life to this downtown Mexican restaurant. And his wife, Mierna, has been working at Mariachi's for over a decade now. Thus, they both have the experience and the character and fitness for this restaurant and the license to accompany it. Mierna is also the proposed manager for the liquor license and is clearly well-qualified with plenty of experience in this field. She's also tip certified. She's familiar with the rules of the ABCC and the City of Stoughton licensing. She's also a U.S. citizen and a Massachusetts resident. And they both look forward to serving their patrons freshly squeezed margaritas to go with their Mexican food, and we're happy to answer any questions that you have.
Thank you very much, and welcome.
Thanks.
Select Board members, do you have any questions? Yes, Mr. Carrera.
Through you, Madam Chairman, to lawyer Jennifer Allen. Jennifer, I don't know if you can answer this, but there's a grease trap on the premises. Outside or inside?
Is it inside? Inside.
Inside? Just the small one in the kitchen? But it doesn't go outside to the one that's out back?
Does it go outside as well to the one out back?
Outside is just a thing that we like throw up oil, like they use it oil.
So they dump the grease outside. So there's what, there's something, there's one outside that they use, but the grease, the small grease trap is inside that they have cleaned out weekly.
And you dumped the grease outside in the...
No, I'm sorry. There's just, they said that there's a grease trap outside.
I know there's a tank outside. That's why I'm trying to figure out. It says that they clean their own. It says there's, it doesn't apply, not apply.
Yeah, they don't have a contract.
But you're supposed to have, you got to have a contract for somebody to clean that, because I'm reading it, and I'm going, "They clean it themselves. Are they going to clean 1,000 gallons?"
Mm-hmm. So when the inspector had come, I guess they discussed it and looked at it, and he had explained to them that they clean it out weekly, and he said, "Okay, that was fine." And that's all I know. I was not there for that. So if they do need to get a contract, then they will.
I'm talking about the one outside. Because when, when they wash the slop sinks and all that, that goes outside. It's a 1,000-gallon tank out there that has to be maintained.
So that's for the one outside that they want a contract for. I think there was miscommunication.
Yeah.
And they thought, they were thinking that they wanted a contract for the one inside.
The inside one, I don't, I don't know how that works. Sometimes they'll...
Yeah.
Baker will give you a, something outside. You can dump that in, and when they come to take care of the... Baker will give you a, 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 something outside. You can dump that in, and when they come to take care of the, the other one, they take care of that.
So that's the one. So there was miscommunication there, so we can get that.
All right.
And I can provide that. I'll bring it over.
Would you feel comfortable with making it subject to that?
You know me, I don't like to bend on things, but there's communication. I understand that. So I'll, if we pass this, I'll go along with it. But I don't want it hanging out there. I want to see it soon.
No, and we agree, and I know that we want to get the process through.
To have a problem that when they don't know they're supposed to take care of the one outside, when that thing goes wrong, it really goes wrong.
Yep. Yep. It's for the one outside. Yep. I will get that over.
That's fine.
Because I know it's contingent upon then going to the state and everything else, so definitely. And I've been running upstairs getting all of my steps in. So.
Vice Chair Cavie?
Choosing Stoughton as a place to do business. I'm a big fan of Avocados. I'm also a big fan of Mariachi's. I go there, both places very often. And I would definitely look forward to continuing to support your business on a very regular basis. And when the bar opens up, I'll be there. San Coria especially, who I've always been a big fan of. I mean, you don't get, you don't get to look like this by not frequenting some of the local restaurants. But no, so I, I definitely support the application. I just thank you for picking the Stoughton to do business. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other questions or Mr. McCrisky?
I have the most important question of the evening, I believe. It's better than a grease trap. So I don't need to go to Taunton Center anymore or 138 in Southeaston? Is that a true statement? I, like Steve, I frequent El Mariachi's very often. And I believe it's your brother that owns it?
Yeah, his, his brother.
His brother, okay, who I've met several times. And I said, why don't you come to Stoughton? So how much of your menu are you, I know it's a smaller location, but give us an idea what your menu is going to be. Let people know. I've got to say, I don't, I never went into Avocados. I just never, I was spoiled. I was going El Mariachi's. Don't need to, but I'm glad you're here. Well, that's it. How much of your menu, I know it's a smaller location, but just give us an idea so people watching at home will know, number one, if you've been to El Mariachi's, now you just come to Stoughton Center. So.
Well, even that, when we get the Avocados that we work.
Excuse me, use the mic.
Oh, sorry.
So the people at home will hear you.
Even when we were like buying Avocados, actually, we were thinking the Avocados was just like a taqueria. You know, we're related with that. They were just like selling like most tacos. And when we just get the, the, the business, the Avocados, and we see that they have like so much more, like more like types difference of food. We were seeing that it was like a good opportunity to also like share like the, all the years that we were working with his brothers, like having the experience of cooking so many other plates. Telling you the truth, like as a family, we always want to have like a little small place with selling like the taqueria, the tacos, like having like people serving themselves like salsa and everything and their tacos. But Avocados was like a great opportunity to share also the experience, like I told you, that we have like serving different plates. So we have like, kind of like everything. We have like seafood, we have enchiladas, we have like new plates, like I was like avocado bowl. There's like a, this type new bowls that you see like everywhere. We have this plate that goes like ceviche. There is some like traditional food that you eat on the beaches of Mexico. There is just like a tilapia fish cooked with lime jalapenos and vegetables. That is like a pretty fresh and good. We also have like different types of burritos. It's something that you can kind of find in, in the mariachi, but as we are putting our own like type or present of the place that we are making, like telling you the truth, the rice is the same thing at the mariachi. But, but the other plates, like we are trying to make our, like our own like signature of them, like try to respect, you know, like the families that they, we are not going to be able to look the same place like because this is like a, kind of like a different, like family star for us. Like Avocados is kind of like our baby, like my husband and us, like making something for our family. So we are really, I don't know, like excited to be part of a town. We love to be like just at the middle of the town where everybody like goes past through. So, yeah, like you can find like a lot of different types of plates.
Because when I get home, I'd get in trouble if I didn't ask. Is guacamole fresh made?
We have like table side guacamole.
Okay, so Maria heard that at home, so I'm safe. So, okay.
The margaritas that we are making is like totally fresh margaritas, nothing with like, you know, like this like prepared syrup, like nothing like that, totally cucumber jalapenos, like have totally fresh jalapeno margaritas, cucumber. The skinny margaritas, everything is totally flesh prepared in front of your eyes, guys. So we are really hope so that we can have like the opportunity to share with the town all stone.
Great, thank you. Welcome to the town.
Thank you so very much. Any other select board comments or questions? Mr. Gito?
Good luck to you. I hope that you're here for many, many years.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Citizens comments. Let's open it up to the citizens. For questions? Can you try? Great. Welcome. There are no further questions. Did you have any closing comments or statements for us?
No, I know that they're, they can speak as well, but I know they're excited to get in here. And I'd just like to thank everybody for tonight, and thank you for letting me drive you crazy.
Well, thank you so much.
She needs it now. She's, that's good training for her.
Motion to close the hearing?
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. A motion to grant the request?
So made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. Congratulations.
Oh, my goodness. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Now, if we can just arrange a $90,000 Lamborghini to be parked out front, I guarantee you that'll bring in some customers, too. I think we could pull that off with somebody in this room.
As long as I get to drive at once.
Oh, you won't be able to drive. We probably did a picture with it, though. $90,000 Lamborghini, there's a stupid statement, right?
Let's move right along to the next application for a Class II license. MV Motorcar of South Florida LLC doing business as Pinnacle Imports. Please step forward. The same process applies. We'll read the, the hearing into the records.
Perfect.
Why don't you sit down and make yourself comfortable? Vice Chair Cavie?
Town of Stoughton, notice of hearing. A public hearing will be held by the select board on December 20th, 2022, at 8:05 PM to consider the application of MV Motorcar of South Florida LLC doing business as Pinnacle Imports. For a Class II license at 346 Washington Street, Stoughton, Massachusetts, 02072. The hearing will be conducted in the Great Hall, third floor, Town Hall, 10 Pearl Street, Stoughton, Massachusetts, and via Google meets. And broadcast via Stoughton Media Access Television and live stream. Google meets video link and telephone connection for public comment available by calling the select board office at 781-341-1300, extension 9212. Or email to lwilson@stoughton-ma.gov by 4:00 PM, the day of the meeting, per order of Deborah C. Roberts, Select Board Acting as Local Licensing Authority.
Motion to open the public hearing?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Vice Chair Cavie?
So we have heard from Stoughton Police Department, Stoughton Fire Department, Building Inspector, Treasure and Water. All have no objections to this application.
Thank you.
I believe there are copies of both in our packet.
Great.
There we go. I can repeat that again. I'm sorry. So my name is Richard Stady. I'm the attorney for the client here. I'm from Canton. And with me is Chaus Stagvini, who is the owner operator of Pinnacle Imports. We're here tonight seeking a Class II license from the Town of Stoughton. Mr. Stagvini is the owner of the property at 346 Washington Street. He is well versed in this type of sales of cars. It's a, it's a kind of a high-end exotic, shall we say? I think Mr. McCrisky led the perfect segue in because the kind of cars here will be maybe not your average cars. There'll be Lamborghinis and Ferraris and, you know, the kind of perhaps other people drive, not me. But they're very, very exotic and very unique. He, so he appeals to a certain clientele. The property is zoned properly. It's the general business district. And we did prior to coming here obtain the necessary relief from the zoning board of Stoughton. They granted us a special permit to operate at this particular site. Coincidentally, it goes back a little bit back when I was a younger man. But there was a prior owner to the dry cleaners named Victor Dino, who owned, it was Dino Buick. Remember, my father used to talk about getting cars from Dino Buick. So there's a history there at that site of being a place for car showroom and car being sold. Some of us can relate to that. Again, this is a, a special permit was approved by the zoning board. I do want to recognize two, a couple of things before I close. Tremendous cooperation from the Town of Stoughton. I can't say enough for some of the help we had here in going through the process. Certainly displayed a business-friendly attitude, which should be appreciated by all. Certainly, I want to signal out a couple of people. When I do that, you get in trouble. But in particular, your new administrative assistant, Lena, was fantastic, helping me down a stretch run and keeping me from a meltdown. And also Kelly in the town clerk's office was fabulous. It was fabulous working with her and getting things done. So, you know, kudos to Stoughton on that. By the way, the hours of operation were approved by the zoning board to be Monday through Saturday, 10 to 6, all by appointment. And we're looking forward to getting going. We would ask, if possible, since this is a renewal night, if at all possible, could, as a courtesy to my client, if we could get the approval on the renewal kind of on the same night, if that could be done? Now, if that's possible, but we're hoping to do that.
So before I open it up to, thank you very, very much. But before I open up questioning to our, my fellow board members, I did talk with our town council, Brian Winner. And he's, first he asked the question, do you really need to have the license in year 2022 because there are only 10 days left? And then if the answer is yes, then the select board is the licensing authority. We could extend, so it's 365 days in a year. We could extend that year and have an automatic renewal. But first, we have to go through our whole process of vetting the, vetting the hearing. So I would open it up to Mr. Gito if he had any questions. I'll open it up to Mr. McCrisky if he has any questions.
No, ma'am.
Then I'll open it up to Vice Chair Cavie.
So thank you very much. Your business is Stoughton. I appreciate you considering our town and for, it sounds like you've already gone through a lot of effort to, to do this. So thank you for picking us. In the police response, there were a couple of additional things they had mentioned. They've got no, they've got no concern with your, with your application, no objections. But they did ask for the board to impose some conditions. The conditions are, I think, be, you know, would be something you would, it's just upon it anyway, but I'll just read them to you so you're aware of them. No blocking of streets, no blocking of sidewalks or view of right of way, and adequate customer parking. So those are things that I assume were already built in and considered. So I, those were things that the police did want to emphasize. And so long as you are, you know, already feel that you are addressing those, then, then there, I have no further questions.
Yes, sir. They're addressed, and thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you very much for, for picking the town and best of luck.
Mr. McCarrara?
Through you to Mr. Stady. Why, why did you have to go to the zoning board? Was it because the, the car license hadn't been acted on? Is that why? Because we didn't get any information. I was, we got was a one line and I was curious, so.
Actually, again and again, thanking the Town of Stoughton and the Building Department for guiding us a little bit there. The general business district, if I may, I'm addressing the chair, but through you, Madam Chairman, to the question. The general business district per se doesn't allow the sale of cars per se. However, you can revive a use that was grandfathered. And again, Mr. Victor Dino, God bless his soul, operated a sale of cars at that location. Your bylaw does allow it, with however, it requires a special permit. So that was why we went for the zoning board to revive a non-conforming use at that location and made it legal by the town standard.
Yeah, that's what I was trying to figure out because we only allow sale and highway use.
Yep.
So, thank you.
You're welcome. No, our pleasure. To answer your question, if I may, too. It is vital that he does get this license for financing purposes. Every doubt, every day counts in terms of getting to the bank with proof that you've got certain permits and license in hand. So we've been really working very hard, again, with the town, try to get this hearing tonight. I know we're right down to the wire, but getting it tonight will help my client tremendously to get the finishing finance that he needs to finish the job there.
Thank you for that clarification. Does the select board members, do the select board members have any other questions? If there are none, we open it up to our citizens. Citizens, do you have any questions?
Motion to close.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well to close the hearing. Before I open it for motion to grant the request, if we do grant the request, we would have, we would just notify our town council and he would draft some type of wording to be included with the, with the license. And that's all we would have to do, according to our town council. So a motion to grant the request.
Madam Chair?
Make a motion. We, we grant the request as submitted, that such application be approved effective this evening with an expiration date of December 31st, 2023.
With, with the caveats of the police departments?
Yes, without a doubt. Yes.
All in, oh.
Do you have some questions? I just want to make sure. I, I really just want to make sure that you guys don't have to come back again. I'm in favor of this entirely. But since all licenses automatically expire on December 31st, would we, are we issuing one license that extends over that period? Or could we just, because we have the application before us, there's no distinction about what, when the application timeline is, could we just grant two, two applications, two time periods? One that goes through December 31st and then also a renewal for, for the following year?
I, I could change the motion to do just that, to include two, but it was my belief through council that we can do the motion that I made.
Yes. Mr.?
Council's go with it. I am.
Mr. Carrara?
I don't know if you can go from one year into another year without drawing a delineation. But if, if he had his stuff ready for the first meeting that we had in January, it could be automatic to grant it then. That way it's done. Because I can't pull a contractor's license and ask it to jump over just because it's the end of the year. You pull it at the end of the year, it falls off, you're back on board. You pull it at the end of the year, it falls off, you're back on board, J1. So it's, there's, there's a process, you can't slide it through.
Vice Chair.
Well, again, that's been vetted by council, Scott. Council said we have the authority.
It's an opinion, I'm giving you, I'm giving you the law, you can't pull a license in town today and ask it to automatically roll over without a formal application.
Well, that's, that's what the question was to council, and he said we have the authority to do it. He's a town clerk.
Then do it, do it.
May I offer?
Vice Chair Cavey.
An alternative, is that we do this, we do it as, just follow the motion as written, but it will, we'll just confer with council, you know, get it kind of in writing, if for some reason our understanding is different than that, then the next hearing that we have, which is next week, we'll just include it with, with our renewals, and you guys won't have to come back, you, all your business will be done, so one way or the other, you'll have, through the end of this year, and then also next year, and everyone kind of gets what they need, and we all make sure that we.
I thoroughly enjoy the town of Stoughton visiting you, but I'd like to be free to come back again if I could, if I could.
You are always welcome here.
You know, and I appreciate that, but if it's just a routine, we don't want to cause any trouble, whatever, we're guided by you, whatever's proper is fine, so whatever works is fine. If you can do it the way town council suggested, fine, if not, as long as my client is going to have his license because he wants to get going, so that's fine.
Let's see if, a way to do it.
The license tonight.
Yeah, let's make two, two motions.
One will be for this license, the other one will be for the next license.
You could do that.
I think that works.
That will work.
So I'll amend my motion to say that the motion is in two, that we approve this license that expires December 31st, and that we approve the license, the same application for the license period of January 1, 2023 to December 31, 2023.
There you go, that works.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Are we voting one, and then voting the other one, or are we voting them both at the same time?
If it makes you more comfortable, you could vote them separately, I have no problem with that.
I'll vote them separately, but I'm not voting them one.
All right, Madam Chair, that would be, my first motion would be that we vote the license that were in front of us, from, the motion again, from effective tomorrow morning until December 31st of this year. That's my motion on this one.
Second.
With the condition of, of the recommendations from the police department?
Yes.
Parking, da-da-da-da.
Yes.
Okay, and we have a second?
Next second.
All in favor for this vote?
Aye.
Madam Chair, a point of water?
Oh, yes.
Is it one single fee?
Yes.
Just wanted to clarify that.
Please, would you amend a friendly amendment to one single fee?
One, okay, so, Madam Chair, then, we'll add that to one single fee.
Just being one fee.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No.
No? Okay, and I vote aye as well. Motion number two?
Madam Chair, motion for approval of the license application as submitted tonight for the period of January 1, 2023 to December 31, 2023.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No.
I don't know whether or not. You've got enough votes.
Okay, we have one abstention, okay.
I get it down here, we took one vote for the first license.
Yes.
I was for that.
Yes.
I'll abstain from the second one like Lou too. I'm not going to vote for that, it's, it's, I can't. People come here to pull licenses on the date that they're supposed to pull it on. This one is for this year, '22, '23 starts J1. It's only a slip of paperwork that has to be done, and the board can do it, there's no rea, he doesn't even have to show, we can do it properly, but I'm not going to sit here and start three months, six months, and, and jumping year to year. It's not fear to other people, we have another system in this town that's done by first come, first served, so if I can come in, I want two licenses to cover two years so that I'm first come. Never seen it in any other town than this town, but that's how it gets done.
So we have two abst, and I voted in favor, so it is three in favor, two abstentions for the record. And that's the vote.
Good luck.
Thank you very much for joining. So you do not need, there's no need to return for another hearing, you're all set until year 2023, December 31, 2023.
My client could come in, like, later in the week, pick up the license, or?
Yeah.
We'll find, we'll follow up, okay. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much.
Process, good process, thank you very much, appreciate it, have a good home.
Have a good hile, bye-bye now. Do you need a break? Okay, so the next item is item number 6C, it's license renewal hearings, fiscal year 2023 licenses, and we'll wait until town clerk and her assistant step forward. Are you stepping forward to?
You want us to come get them?
To moderate or facilitate this? Oh, I didn't know if you were.
No, I was thinking.
Oh, oh, okay, we didn't know what was going on, we. License renewal hearing fiscal year 2023 licenses.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I'll read the, the hearing notice. Town of Stoughton, notice of hearing, a public hearing will be held by the select board on Tuesday, December 20th at 8:15 PM, to consider the renewal of all licenses issued by the select board for calendar year 2023. The hearing will be conducted in the Great Hall, third floor, Town Hall, 10 Pearl Street, Stoughton, Massachusetts, and virtually via Google meets. Google meets video link and telephone connection for public comment is available by calling the select board office at 71-341-1300, extension 9212, by email to lwilson@stoughton-ma.gov, or on the town website, www.stoughton.org backslash select dash board, 48 hours prior to the meeting, per order of Deborah C. Roberts, Chair, acting as local licensing authority.
Thank you very much, Vice Chair Cavey, motion to open the public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I vote aye as well.
So the police department, fire department, buildings, board of health, treasurer, and water department, all have no objections to the, to the licenses that we'll be reading to the record soon.
Vice Chair Cavey, would you do the honors of reading the list?
Yes, so, well, typically, my recollection is that, that, that once we vote these, I start, I'll read them all into the record separately, based on the license class, or the license type. So we should probably just, I guess, begin by looking to see if there's, there are no applicants that I'm aware of, I should ask, is anybody regarding any of these licenses in, here, that they'd like to speak? See, not, does anybody in the select board have any questions? See, none, does the public have any comments? I think it's for the, number eight. Does anybody in the public have any comments?
Um, how do I know what you're even looking at?
Well, it was, this was published online with the, with the list of applications I can provide you, there's actually one at the desk as well, we'll provide you with it, but these are all the applications for everybody in town.
Thank you, so this is what we're looking, these involve in, as the, as the town clerk and our assistant mentioned, these involve in, well, it says complete.
Yes.
So if I have a question, you're just going to read, in the past, well, you could read a class, and then ask if there's any questions about that particular class, or you could read the first one, page by page, it's up to the board, I just don't, I don't know if I have any questions, because I just got a look at this, but I'll try to keep up.
Okay, and so just to give you an idea of what I'm looking to do here is that, once we get through the public hearing component of it, I will be reading the business name and address of all the businesses, we'll, we'll vote according to class, so we'll start with all the Class II licenses, and I'll read all the Class II licenses, we'll vote on those, I'll then vote, read all the Class III licenses, we'll vote on those, all the common vehicle licenses, and we'll vote on those, and so forth, until we're done with this entire list. So with that being said, and without any comments from the select board or the public, entertain a motion to close the public hearing. Yeah. Do we have a second? Second, so motion to close the public hearing, there's a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I vote as well.
I vote aye as well.
Mr. Vice Chair.
Yes.
Can I make a comment?
Yes.
Just for anybody that wasn't here earlier, or if you're not a veritable area on cable, every one of the files before you receive them have been fully vetted in the private clerk's office, and are completely under the time.
Thank you very much, Mr. Town Manager. So in that case, I will make a motion to approve the following Class II licenses. Apex Auto Body at 1228 Park Street, Billy Auto Body, Auto Sales at 1254 Washington Street, C&amp;J Auto Body and Sales at 1264 Washington Street, Chamber Motor Group at 1262 Washington Street, G&amp;E Getty at 584 Pearl Street, Hugert &amp; Ewing at 1305 Washington Street, Hugert Motors at 1317 Washington Street, Lucky Star Petroleum at 825 Washington Street, Sam's Getty Incorporated at 452 Canton Street, Sherm's Incorporated at 32 Cushing Street, Stoughton Valero at 645 Washington Street, Tom's Auto Transport Incorporated at 233 Canton Street. Those are all the Class II licenses. Was anybody willing to second that motion? So the motion was to approve those licenses, I'm just looking for a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I vote aye as well.
I make a motion that we approve the following Class III license, this would be Central Auto Exchange Incorporated at 1152 Washington Street. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well.
I make a motion that we approve the following Class III and junk, junk licenses for DLR Core Supplies at 1186 Washington Street.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I vote aye as well.
I move that we approve the following club and all alcohol licenses for the following businesses. Charles H. Lane Amvets Post Number 1977 at 1575 Central Street, Club Luiz de Camos Incorporated at 76 Porter Street, Club of San, San John Philharmonic Society at 845 Washington Street, Michael Romanuck V, did I pronounce that right, Romanuck, VFW Post Number 1645 at 837 Washington Street, Portuguese National Club Incorporated at 21 Railroad Avenue, and Sons of Italy at 548 Washington Street.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I vote aye as well.
Okay, here's the fun part, here's the good one. I, I make a motion that we approve the following common vehicle licenses. First, Alex's Good Taste at 445 Central Street, All-Town Market Stoughton at 372 Washington Street, Blessed Experience at, on Washington Street, Brazil For You Incorporated at 529 Washington Street, Burger King at 1333 Park Street, Burger King at 299 Washington Street, Corner Cafe at 945 Washington Street, D'Angelo Sandwich Shop at 2137 Central Street, Deeg's Local Diner at 1261 Park Street, Nino's Pizza at 545 Pearl Street, Doop Brazil at 22 Porter Street, Dunkin' Donuts at 287 Park Street, Dunkin' Donuts at 438 Washington Street, Dunkin' Donuts at 1516 Turnpike Street, KFC Taco Bell at 265 Washington Street, Lucky Garden at 773 Washington Street, Lucky Pizza at 356 Washington Street, McDonald's at 422 Washington Street, Miranda Bread at 358 Washington Street, Orea Love Story at 434 Pearl Street, Panera Bread at 1334 Park Street, Papachinos at 319 Washington Street, Pearl Street Nutrition at 5 Pearl Street, Prato Fino Do Brasil at 79, 79 Canton Street, Wright Taste Jamaican at 354 Washington Street, Roxanne's Tux, Taqueria at LLC at 9, 95 Sharon Street, Runner Pizza at 56 Washington Street, Rumak, so Rukmai Thai Cuisine at 1778 Washington Street, now, give me a second on this one, Saint Athanasius, Jesus, I don't go here often, I apologize, I should stop by sometime, let's see, Saint Athanasios Central Street, Pizzeria at 37 Dyckman Way, I won't do that again next year, sorry, Stoughton Pizza, Stoughton Pizza at 875 Washington Street, Subway at 438 Washington Street, Sunrise House at 343 Washington Street, Sunshine Brazil Restaurant at 2 Canton Street, and Target Store T2258 at 1 Hawes Way.
Yes, Mrs. Walsh, we recognize you.
Is the lap of the word "complete" next to Lucky Pizza simply a typo?
Yes, it is.
Thank you.
Thank you.
What is the official name?
Sorry, was that?
Is it Lucky?
Lucky Pizza, yeah, that is complete as well.
Miss Walsh made a comment if that was the correct name.
It's a.
Or is it truncated or something?
I, is it the correct name? I think the question she had was whether or not the, the, where it says "application complete" on here, that, the word "complete" was missing for Lucky Pizza, but that was an error, that it is complete.
The plug is in the J U.
Yeah, so that is complete.
All right.
So motion's been made, I think it's been seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I vote aye as well.
I move that we approve the pro, the current, sorry, the following common vehicle license and amusement license, Kid Sports, 11 Evans Drive.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well.
I move that we approve common vehicle license and license and all alcohol license for Sonesta Select Boston at 200 Technology Center Drive.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well.
Okay, I move that we approve common vehicle license and all alcohol license for the following locations. Amelia's at 217 Washington Street, Alex's Baywatch at 584 Washington Street, Backstreet Grill and Tavern at. Backstreet Grill and Tavern at 531 Pearl Street. Bean Town Diner at 593 Washington Street. Bob's Food Mart and Discount Liquor at 289 Park Street. Chateau of Stoughton at 1165 Park Street. Chinatown at 103 Sharon Street. Golden Palace Incorporated at 300 Washington Street. J&amp;G Hillside Grill at 1137 Park Street. Juanita's Steakhouse at 577 Washington Street. Listola Restaurant at 559 Washington Street. Ming Du at 657 Washington Street. Mr. Chef's at 490 Washington Street. Paris Cabaret/Starline Room Dinner Theater at 49 Monk Street. Public House 02072 at 37 Monk Street. Smokey Bones Bar and Fire Grill at 301 Technology Drive. Stoned Town Spa at 1119 Washington Street. Su Su Sushi Japanese Restaurant at 408 Washington Street. TGI Fridays at 2 Hawes Way. Toffee Social at 10 Wyman Street. And the Olive Garden Italian Restaurant at 401 Technology Center Drive.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I vote aye as well.
I move that we grant the following fortune license at, it would be Angela's Palm and Card Reading, 968 Central, sorry, Central Street.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well.
I move that we approve the following lodging licenses. 118 Pleasant Street Realty Trust at 118 Pleasant Street. Station Lodging LLC at 820 Washington Street. Saxon Management at 99-101 Porter Street. Andretti Liquors, oh, sorry, scratched that last one, that's not a place to lodge. So let's go through Saxon Management.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I vote aye as well.
Okay, I move that we approve the following package store and all alcohol licenses. Andretti Liquors at 280 Washington Street. BJ's Wholesale Club #34 at 901 Technology Center Drive. Central Liquors Mart at 21 Wyman Street. New World Liquors at 676 Washington Street. And Page's Grocery and Liquor Incorporated at 458 Pearl Street.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I vote aye as well.
I move that we approve the following package and beer and wine licenses. Andy's Food Mart, 330 Morton Street. J&amp;I Variety at 742 Washington Street. Jimmy's Market at 253 Pleasant Street. Neighborhood Variety at 257 School Street. New Store on the Block at 430 Park Street. And Pinecrest Convenience at 450 Pearl Street.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I vote aye as well.
I move that we approve the following pawn license, Empire Loan at 353 Washington Street.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I vote aye as well.
And finally, I move that we approve the following taxi license for the Right Ride at 33 Clarkson Drive, Walpole 02081.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. And thank you Vice Chair KV for reading off the list of licenses for renewal. Thank you.
By the time we get to the end, like, words stop having meaning. So thank you very much for your patience.
Okay. Yeah, I would, Madam Chair?
Yes.
Motion to close the hearings.
Can I get a second?
Oh, sorry, I thought it was already closed. Yeah.
Second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. The next is on our list, item number eight, and that is the Portuguese National Club is a change of manager. I was informed that there's no one in the audience to attend this hearing. I have some background on that, and maybe Mr. Tisdale or Mr. Coulter can help with the mistake or issue is in regards to that, so we can approve that and move on.
Actually, they would help with the automotive place. Because they talked about that, right, the automotive place, but for the Portuguese National, that was the one that you had the history of, you know, with the change of manager, that there was an issue.
Talk into the microphone.
Okay, the Portuguese National was some, was the company, the company that had a problem with the change of manager license, that you had some background, where they, where there was an issue with some, something clerical, clerical problem in our office in 2018, which caused that problem, so they shouldn't be withheld from keeping their license, getting their license back. I mean, their change of manager license. Do you remember that?
Yeah.
We talked about that.
I remember that being discussed at one point, that they, for some reason, when they came for a manager change, it wasn't filed correctly.
Right.
At the time.
Right.
So it was voted by the board, they had a copy of the vote by the board, but it was never.
Right.
Issued in the correct name.
That's right.
So there's still, the existing license still has the wrong manager's name on it.
Right.
So, I mean, with that, I mean, the change of the manager, I mean, the vote was taken by the board, it seems like it's a clerical thing, that it should just be, with the minutes of the meeting, should go in and just be retyped and the issue of the license being presented. So, I mean, that would be out of the board's end, because there's no sense of putting it through the clerk's office again, where the vote was already taken, the change of manager was already approved, it's just that it didn't get into their hands for some reason.
Right.
So...
Back in the year 2018, yes, Mr. Coulter?
If I may, Madam Chair, I know the ABC considers a change of management a very serious change, that, strike that, very important part of the licensure. I would like to suggest, and I'm happy to make a personal call to the business owner, the board should have the opportunity to meet the manager, and my understanding is that they didn't meet the manager in 2018. So there was, there was that clerical problem, or that process problem, that I think we own, but I do think it's important that the board have an opportunity to meet the manager. And I'd be happy to call, apologize for the clerical mistake, and just invite him or her in to see us at the next meeting. I think that would be the right thing to do.
So maybe we could have a motion to continue?
Yeah, there's nothing, nothing to vote on, just, we don't act on it. Let the town manager make the phone call, and then sometime, we'll re, you know, we'll make another appointment.
Simply table it.
Table it.
We'll reschedule for next Tuesday if the manager is available. It's just from our perspective, in terms of our obligations to the ABC, it's important that we meet the manager.
Okay, so let's table it until next Tuesday, and that would be Tuesday, December 27.
We didn't have to advertise this as a public hearing?
I don't think so.
No. Okay.
And Lena, I'll just need the contact information. That'd be great.
Okay, okay, that's true.
Just turn it up properly.
Thank you, we will. So for our guest on Row Two, are you here for any agenda item for tonight?
We are going to, we are, our names in the agenda, because we come close to hearing today.
Yes, please step forward, state your name and the reason for your visit.
David Kazemi.
Oh, if you could use the microphone, the acoustics in this room is so bad.
Have to turn the microphone on, also.
You have to push that button, yes.
I'm Ed Pishdian, I'm a co-owner of 1873 Washington Street Platinum Motors.
David Kazemi, 1873 Washington Street.
Madam Chair, I can clarify this?
Please.
That is not in your packet, and I'm going to ask Mr. Tisdale, Mr. Tisdale to speak to it. The application is not complete, we worked very hard to get it to its completion, and Mark would be happy to explain the reasoning why.
Okay, and before we proceed...
Madam Chair, if I may?
Yes.
If the application is not complete, we just had a diligent effort by the clerk's office and the town manager to bring applications before us that are complete and ready for discussion. I think we're off to the wrong start if we take on a conversation that's not on the agenda, and it's a result of a license not being complete, after we just listened to the town manager, Mr. Tisdale, and the clerk's office say how diligent they were to get all these ready, so we don't have to deal with things like this, and here we are right now, going to do it. I would suggest we not hear this, and that the applicant go back to the town manager, Mr. Tisdale, and the clerk's office, make the changes that are needed in your license, so that it can come back here and be ready for a vote by this board. I'm not ready to discuss anything, I don't want to hear anything until the application is ready, because this is a waste of our time right now.
Madam Chair, I agree with the gentleman.
Madam Chair, I would like to bring it to the gentleman's attention that this is a very complicated matter. We were notified less than 20 days ago that the town somehow decided, the license board to suspend the license.
Madam Chair, if I may, I don't believe that this is correct information that we're getting, that right now, 20 days notification, they were notified, whether, when you got it is your problem, but they all went out at the same time. So it's not like we hold back certain licenses. This is why, Madam Chair, I repeat, we should not be doing this right now, this not what we should, we're setting a dangerous precedent here, that we're getting involved with a debate of a license. We have paid professionals to get that information to us, and if we do this, we open up a dangerous road that we just let everybody come here in the middle of the meeting, when they're not on the agenda, and try to argue their point independently. This is not what this board should be doing, it's not a clean protocol, it's not professional, and I won't be voting on it.
Thank you very much, Mr.
I'd make that a motion, if we have to make a motion.
You've got a second, all in favor?
Make a motion that we not hear this.
Having said that, I'm sorry, Madam Chair, having said that, the clerk's office remains open to work with the applicant on the issues they have.
Right, just the way they should.
Thank you very much.
The license is due to be renewed for the first.
So we're delegating it back, your license, back to the clerk's office, they're sitting behind you, and they will discuss the matter with you.
I was at the clerk's office.
Madam Chair.
So, sir, I think...
Madam Chair.
...that was supposed to be presented.
We're moving on to our next agenda item.
Come in to see the clerk tomorrow morning.
You have the clerks are right behind you, you could schedule an appointment.
I just would like to ask if you have the paperwork that was submitted to you?
Do not have any paperwork.
It's not our job, it's not ready to be here, that's what you don't understand.
So...
For whatever reason, it's not ready, we don't have it, we have nothing to vote on, we're not going to discuss it. All right, so that's, the clerk's office is sitting right behind you, that's where you need to be, not here. It's not ready, so we're not discussing it.
So we will be...
I was at the clerk's office yesterday morning.
Yes, we're moving...
They said you need to be heard.
Sir, we're moving along to the next agenda item, you have representatives from the clerk's office, they will help you with this, and our town manager's there trying to, if you could see Mr. Coulter. Okay, and with that, we're moving right along to our next agenda item, and it is item number nine, fiscal year 2024 operating budget to continue discussions. What we asked, we requested copies of the organizational chart and job descriptions, and I know town manager, our town manager, Mr. Coulter, was gathering that information, and the organizational chart was being gathered for presentation by Mr. Tisdale. Also, tonight, we'll be reviewing the one-year capital plans that need the board's input on capital projects. Now, the multi-year special capital project plan is still in development, Mr. Tisdale and Mr. Coulter are working on that. Another thing I wanted to remind the board about is, this is not the only opportunity we will have to discuss the operating budget, it will be on the agenda for next week as well, that is Tuesday, December 27. We'll continue our discussions. Town manager, Thomas Coulter, is taking another review of the operating budget, and so he's going to bring some modifications, or what, he's going to make some tweaks to the budget as well, and he'll present those to us next week, which is December 27. Department heads, because we knew that there would be some changes made to the operating budget, we did not invite the department head to tonight's meeting. If there are any questions from the board, then Mr. Tisdale and Mr. Coulter will be able to answer. If something needs a deeper dive, then next week, we will invite the specific town manager, yeah, the specific department head to the meeting, so they can answer those questions. And I think that's it. And, oh, Mr. Tisdale, did I, is there anything else?
Yeah, no, I think you summarized it pretty well, thank you very much.
Madam Chair, could we wait for the town manager to come back into the room, so that we don't have a conversation and then another conversation?
Okay.
Can do it all at one time.
So would you like to have a two-minute recess?
I would.
Yes. Five-minute recess? Let's do a five-minute recess.
Thank you.
So would you like to have a two-minute recess?
I would.
Yes. Five-minute recess? Let's do a five-minute recess.
Thank you.
So would you like to have a two-minute recess?
I would.
Yes. Five-minute recess? Let's do a five-minute recess.
Thank you.
So would you like to have a two-minute recess?
I would.
Yes. Five-minute recess? Let's do a five-minute recess.
Thank you.
(end of transcript) I call the select board meeting back to order at 9:09 PM on December 20. Where we left off was item number nine. That is the fiscal year 2024 operating budget. So I gave a little context about, we will revisit the topic next week. Mr. Coulter is tweaking the budget and he's going to have, or may have, some changes. We don't know what departments those will impact right now. But with that said, and everything that I prefaced before, I hand it over to Mark Tisdale.
Thank you very much, Deborah. All right, well, this is a continuation of last week's presentation with Tom coming on board. He picks up things very quickly, and he's really adamant about getting into the budget and really understanding every single line in the budget. We've been spending plenty of time together. He's probably sick of me by now, but we've gone through the budget line by line. We're still going through it, and I think he's going to have some really good changes from his perspective, and I endorse it. What we're trying to establish tonight is just the schedule for the remaining part of December and January. We always like to start from the deadline, at least I do. On January 17, the select board needs to have your budget submitted on, before the 17th, to the finance committee. So that's kind of the endpoint. You need to have the budget done, and then the warrant closes the first Tuesday in February for the articles, right? So those are two critical dates. After January 17, you can still work on the articles, maybe another meeting or so, but then you've got to close the warrant on February 2, I believe. So with that said, tonight, the goal is going through this schedule that we've crafted together, Tom and I, and kind of making sure the board is on consensus of this, making sure the schedule kind of meets your needs. And the way we're going to handle it is, tonight, go over the schedule and answer any basic questions you may have. If we can't answer the questions, we'll jot them down and get answers for you from the department heads. Next week, between this time, this week and next week, Tom and I will have gone through the whole budget. He will have some tweaks to the budget, and you'll have his final budget submitted to you as required by the charter before the end of December. It then becomes the select board's budget at that point, starting on January 1. So on January 3, I'm anticipating that you would have a select board meeting, and then we have discussions with department heads for their articles and their budgets. So in past years, this has been done different ways, but I think the most effective, efficient way, so department heads aren't coming to two or three different meetings or more than that, is have certain departments on January 3. We'll start off with the bigger ones, police, fire, and whatnot. I did give everybody a handout of my recommendations. Police, crossing guards, animal control, dispatches, fire, public works, all the departments with public works, development services, all the departments with that department, and library specifically requested January 3 because they have a meeting on the 10th. Go through those department budgets and their articles. So the departments here, they answer questions for their budget and for their articles, in and out. Doesn't mean they're going to not have to come back. They may need to come back, but I think a majority of the departments, most of the questions can be answered for the articles and for the budget that night. We come to January 10, which is your next board of select meeting. All the rest of the departments, they're smaller departments. We should be able to go through them more quickly, not as many changes in those departments. Same format. The department heads come here, we go through the budgets, we go through the articles. So January 3, budgets and articles, questions for the department heads. January 10 is the same thing. Now you've got one more meeting left before you have to hand your budget off to the finance committee. Technically, you need to have it on January 17, on or before January 17, the third Tuesday in January. So you may want to have a conversation with the chair of the finance committee. Maybe it's just a verbal agreement that they're okay receiving it the next day. If not, you would have to have your meeting on Monday, January 16, or another date before that. And this thing's dynamic and fluid. As we go through this, we may be like, wow, we took on too much to chew this night, you know? We may need to add another night in, somewhere in between this. But this is what we're proposing initially. I think it can work, and we're just kind of looking for the board's endorsement on this schedule moving forward. And secondly, like we mentioned earlier, if you do have any questions that we can answer tonight, we'd be more than happy. But again, with Tom's idea of maybe making some tweaks and changes, I wouldn't want a question to come up that potentially isn't applicable if Tom has addressed it and tweaked it already, say, a new position or something like that.
Hey, Mark.
Yeah.
Through you, Madam Chair.
Yes, Mr. Coulter.
Just to, at the risk of saying what Mark has just said, which I support completely in a slightly different way, it's important to us, to Mark and I, that we build consensus. There is a budget committee that worked more than 40 hours on the budget you delivered last week. They need to, their positions and their work need to be respected. So as I went through the budget over the weekend, I've got more than 60 recommendations I think we need to change. So in order to do that, Mark and I have convened a meeting, a three-hour meeting tomorrow with that budget committee, to explain those recommendations to them, to build consensus with them, as opposed to unilaterally doing it. We talked a lot about that weeks ago, rather than just changing it without their input. Tonight, we're going to ask for, receive feedback from you on the budget in front of you. Those comments are going to be incorporated into this budget. So the budget you receive by the end of next week for the next Tuesday meeting will incorporate the budget of the budget committee, my input after review last weekend, and that we're going to discuss tomorrow, your input into that budget, and we're going to listen closely. What we're not, going to try not to do this evening is offer any explanation or debate. We need to hear your comments and your requests. We're going to incorporate everything we can into this budget, and if we can't, we'll explain why in this budget next week. So again, we're not going to try and debate or to defend, but to hear your comments so we can bring them to the budget committee tomorrow. And by next week, and Mark and I are committed to getting this done, and plenty of time for you to see it before the meeting, come up with a consensus budget. Now, one last point. Once you turn it over to the FinCom, we are going to follow the same process with the FinCom, trying to build a budget consensus with them, a consensus budget with them. We'll make department heads available by appointment so that they're not all sitting there for four hours. We'll explain and take their comments and give rationale for all of our decisions in this budget and who gave input. At the end of that process, if the finance committee and the selectmen don't have the same budget, and since the charter requires that both budgets be presented, we will be asking, in fact, Steve, this was in your narrative in the town meeting, in the interview process, we're going to ask the chairman and the vice chairman of the selectmen to join the chairman and the vice chairman of the finance committee with Mark and I and Bill Rowe into a meeting. We'll have smoke in the chimney, ready for it to puff up the top, until we reach consensus on a final budget. I believe we owe that to town meeting, is that we keep working until we build consensus. So I'll be quiet because this is Mark's role now, is, the objective now, Madam Chair, is to take comments, suggestions, recommendations, and direction on what you see in this budget this evening. And we're going to listen very closely. I'll take great notes. So we bring that to the budget committee tomorrow. Thank you for the time.
Thank you very much. With that said, I will ask Mr. Gito if you have any questions, just to start us off.
Questions or comments?
Comments, comments. To be at it exactly what Mr. Coulter and Mr. Tisdale said.
Thank you. I appreciate that, and I appreciate your waiting for everybody to be in the room. I guess my initial comment is that I think we have a major problem with the VNA, the enterprise fund. And it's not a matter of whether it's an enterprise fund or whether it is, it goes away from the enterprise fund and becomes part of the budget. There's about a $400,000 shortfall in that budget. It's been a wonderful organization. It has provided tremendous support to the people in Stoughton and to others in surrounding towns. And its charter was to be a, an organization that provided support not only to Stoughton but to other communities as well. And as the Medicare situation has changed, it has caused problems there.
Correct.
We thought last year that it may have been principally a COVID issue. We spent, we put in over $350,000 into that program last year. It's not that problem. And if we continue the operation the same way that it has been running, it will be providing support not only to Stoughton residents but to other communities as well. Town meeting might be happy with that. I do not know, but I think it's important to make sure that everybody understands that we would be funding support for other communities. It's not an intermunicipal agreement where perhaps in police and fire, we change, move people from town to town as issues occur.
But I also want to agree with you again, I'm really concerned about our level of consensus here. That was funny, by the way.
I didn't hear you, sorry.
I'm going to take it back. I agree with you again, but we can have it both ways. If we address the structural deficits in Water, Sewer, VNA, we're going to be left with a substantially increased amount of free cash, which gives us more money for projects. So we can address now, not later, in this next fiscal year, we're going to be able to address those projects that beautify our town and make us very attractive to people that drive through or the people that live here. So we're going to go through the capital budget as well. If we, if the board supports this budget, my best estimate is we'll be increasing free cash by a little over $2 million. And that's going to, that can be used at the board's discretion to do exactly what you're talking about. But we have to face some of our structural deficits head-on. They're structural. They're not one-time hits. They're real. And the funding sources in the past, whether it was retained earnings of the Enterprise Fund, or free cash, or money from the operating budget, is no longer available to us. Our goal as a staff that met here today is we believe we can erase the use of free cash within three years while investing significant dollars into beautification and maintenance and upkeep of our buildings. But it's going to cause a little pain all around, including our employees. We're recommending, through Mark's hard work and the committee's hard work, these are employees recommending an 8% increase of the payment made towards the self-funded insurance health program. We're recommending that too, and that recommendation is coming from the Employees-Based Budget Committee, because it's been running at a deficit for a year or two. And being self-funded, we can't not run a structural deficit within that account. So we're going to, we're going to make those recommendations in this revised budget next Tuesday. There's a lot of work to do. Mark and I will be working through the holiday to get it done. After we get your comments tonight, the other board members' comments tonight, we work with the Budget Committee tomorrow, you're going to see a budget that reflects some very hard choices, but some very strong fiscal policies and changes that we're going to have to explain to our employees and to our citizens as to why we're taking these prudent measures, should you so approve.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other board members with comments?
Why don't you just go right up the road?
Oh, go right up the road. Okay, Mr. McChrisky.
Just a quick one, and I think I've spoken both to the Town Manager and Mr. Tisdale different times about this. And I know it's tough to be talking about adding positions, but with what we have, we're still trying to get a grasp on zoning violations, which have been just horrible in this town. And we've got residents leaving trash on sidewalks. We have cars parking in roadways. We have commercial vehicles being parked on streets facing in the wrong way. We've got tractor trailers parked in residential neighborhoods, large dump trucks in residential neighborhoods, you know, never mind the businesses that just don't seem to know what zoning is. And our previous zoning enforcement officer left for another employment, and we're basically stagnant now. And we can all talk about wanting flowers and all this pretty stuff, but if everywhere we go, people are not abiding by the current zoning laws and running illegal operations in the town that are not covered, this is a train going downhill with no brakes, you know? And with that, I know we have to, we have to still fill the vacancy of the full-time position in the zoning position, the zoning enforcement officer, but I believe we should have another position in the Building Department that was split. As an Assistant to the Building Inspector and somebody who can do the paperwork for the zoning enforcement person to keep the ball rolling. Right now, we have the Building Inspector trying to work with legal counsel to go to court with some of these cases of the people that just ignore us when we go down. There's plenty, there's at least more than a half a dozen home contractors. I can think of one on Kingsley Street. I can think of one on Stoughton Street. These are people that run their business out of their house with their equipment in the yard. And up in the, and I forget the name of the street now, but up in the Halloran Park area, there's one where there's Bobcat machines in the backyard, construction trailers, and there, what was it?
Belcher.
Belcher Street. That's the one I'm thinking of. And, you know, we can all say how great we want the town to be, but every day we go out there, every day that the people that are doing the enforcement, we're at a deficit. So it, we've got to address that as well. It, it's just out of hand. It's, it's just really, everybody sees it in their own neighborhoods, you know, residences that are putting trash out two and three days before trash day. That's real, real nice for our neighborhoods, you know, real nice for our neighborhoods. And at least we've got the DPW out there working at it, but we have to, we have to educate our residents in some cases as well. We have a lot of multiple family homes that the landlords don't do anything about the parking. We have some homes that are overutilized where there's 12, 13 cars that are parking on grass, driveway in the street, overutilizing houses. We know what happens there. We know the fire danger, what happened to Randolph a few years ago, you know, where there were people living in an illegal apartment in the cellar. This is an important issue. This is the things that, you know, this is the lifeblood of our community is our neighborhoods. And if we're faltering in that area, you know, everything else we have on the outside doesn't mean anything.
Through you, Madam Chair?
Yes, Mr. Calder.
Thank you, ma'am. And Mr. McChrisky, you'll be pleased to know that the budget writers, led by Mark, and then after my review of the budget over the weekend, and now your comments, there is a full-time position for a zoning enforcement officer in next year's budget.
Right, but that's the one we already had.
No, it's a, go ahead. Isn't it halftime right now?
No, that's the Building Inspector.
Oh, that's right. It's already there, but we're going to fill it if, assuming the rest of the board agrees with it.
But the problem is, Tom, is it's, it's a full-time position, but that one person can't go to court, can't do the job, and then, and the workload just on the Building Inspector alone of what he's doing as well. I mean, you know, I only see it from, you know, I guess you want to call it the high-altitude look. I'm not in the weeds with you folks, so I'm going to yield to you on what the position, you know, what the office really needs. You know the operation better daily than I do, but I'm just looking at, you know, I know what the previous Dana was doing in that position, and the guy was right out crazy. He may have left because he just couldn't do it all. And it's, there's just so many violations out there.
Sir, are you suggesting more than one person dedicated to zoning enforcement?
I would say a zoning, a zoning, a full-time, somebody out on the road finding all these problems and somebody, you know, on the admin side. Now, whether it's done with clerical staff, maybe that can be the case too, but one way or another, we need to ramp it up because Dana was here, what, about a year on the job?
Yeah, Dana was here a little over a year, yep. He went to get a, I, I, I congratulate Dana, he went and get the Building Inspector job and Sharon, an upgrade for him. So that position, just to clarify, right, is in the Building Department now.
Right.
We do have another employee in town taking a temporary stipend, feeling out the position, seeing if it's something that they want to consider doing permanently. We're at the point where we do need to make a decision for that long-term. We do. I think we've had two or three months to figure it out. We need to have a tough decision with the person doing it now, saying, we got to decide, do you want to do this full-time? If not, we'll put the position out to hire full-time. On the second note, my personal opinion is from the other side, not code enforcement, but the other side of Building Department, building permits and inspections also needs help. We have our Building Commissioner going out and looking at, you know, how many studs are in the buildings, the insulation, how many nails are in each stud, things of that nature, and we have a very busy Building Department. There are permits coming in left and right that he needs to review every day and push out. They're getting delayed because he's out doing inspections. He needs to be in reviewing the permits and getting them out and have somebody in the field doing the other stuff. And what a part-time position is very similar to like a plumbing inspector and a wiring inspector. You actually may get somebody in the field, somebody who actually has a job in the trade of doing this kind of stuff, knows it inside and out. So I think with the halftime position, I've talked to our Building Commissioner, he supports it also, it's going to be a critical add to that Department. There's something else happening in that Department too, is we're losing the longtime administrative person at the Department on January 1st, which is a big hit for a Department like that. So we're trying to break that Department down and build it back up. That administrative person will now only do, take in the permits and schedule inspections. Right now, that position actually also takes in zoning board of appeal applications and processes those. We're breaking it up. It actually used to be like that years ago, I believe. And Kristen, our administrative professional in Development Services across the hall, does that for planning board right now. Planning board and zoning board go together very well. And you'll see that we're trying to obviously help Kristen out a little bit in the budget because we're pushing her to her max limits doing that. So we're trying to keep the people we have, hire part-time positions where needed, trying to minimize the full-time positions as much as possible. But the Building Department, because I know it well, I know needs that help. It's a critical year for that Department.
Well, I'll yield to you folks, but again, it just, anybody who's been around this town, there's a lot of us born and raised here, you know, and we see the difference out there. The neighborhoods are changing, the uses are changing, and if we don't do anything about it, it just, you know, you will never, we'll never be able to gain control of it.
We hear you very clearly on this.
And as well as, you know, I think I would roll into that, that that person could also, that, you know, position could be in, under zoning enforcement with traffic enforcement, writing parking tickets. You know, our police department has enough to do with the world changing the way it is. We're not getting parking enforcement the way we should.
Right.
You know, I mean, they're parking everywhere. There is a law 25 feet from an intersection. I mean, there's trucks parked. I mean, I say just take a ride down Perry Street, and you could probably write 10 or 12 parking violations there all the time, you know? And again, you know, when we're not doing anything, it's going to get worse and worse and worse because it wasn't like this 10 years ago. You know, and again, I believe it's because we haven't stood up to the test of time. We haven't really focused on it and kind of let it go, and the multifamily homes are killing it. You know, people will park the closest to their door. It may be that there's a parking lot on the other side of the house, but they park in the street because it's closer to the door, you know? And again, I mean, that's something that should be done through zoning enforcement. It's a simple job, you know, and that's why I say there's enough to do if we put a full-time position. But again, whatever you decide how you want to run, that's your job.
Joe, I think your argument is well-made, and you can drive around town and see it.
Right.
So you're 100% right. The challenge we have, and Mark has already spelled out his plans for that Department, and it's very consistent with your desires for that Department. So that works out well. But as part of this budget, we're going to present to you, one of the key initiatives you'll see in that cover sheet that Mark and I are putting together, is a hiring freeze. After we put people where they're most needed, which is in this area, the applications are at an all-time high, the workload is, which is wonderful for down-the-road tax revenues. It's excellent. It really, it speaks well of our new growth next spring and the spring after that. But we have to find ways, if we're going to erase this structural deficit within three years, to use our existing staff efficiently, which there'll be a lot of consolidation, a lot of scaling and efficiencies. We have to do that because every time we hire an FTE, we're adding $20,000 to our healthcare and to our, into our post-retirement fund. And those come back and get us later on. So my partner and I are working very closely with HR and with the Management Committee that we're just now formed to think about where we can consolidate, where we can use, where we can find people. So we're not, we're not going to, and I know it's important to Selectmen, K.V. and all of you, we're not going to cut back the staff at all by not one person. But as people retire or leave, before we advertise the position, we're going to see if we can find some internal efficiencies and consolidation so as to not have to replace that headcount. And so that's a real priority for next year. But in this Department in particular, where we're getting all the strains, the good strains, the good pains of rapid growth, we agree with you completely. We'll shore up that Department.
Thank you, thank you very much. We'll move right along. Vice Chair, K.V., just to keep going down the row.
Sure, I have a couple of questions. They're very minor, and the dollar value of all of them adds up to practically nothing. So, but I am kind of curious about some of, some of the items on, on the budget you provided. So in the last couple of years, I've attended a number of the Finance Committee meetings. And one thing I noticed that came up, you know, I think every year for a couple of years in a row, actually, this might have actually been during your tenure there as well, so you can correct me if I'm wrong, but was crossing guards, the paying of crossing guards. And there was concern that they, they were not getting compensated enough. And I just wanted to, to, to see, from what I'm seeing here, it looks like there is an increase, there was actually last year an increase, but the actuals from the prior year, so I see kind of a big, you know, a big jump from '22 to '23, and it looks like a slightly smaller jump in '24. But does that increase in '23 represent an increase in pay for the crossing guards?
The answer is yes.
Okay.
It's based upon the previous year, and we're working with Superintendent Rob right now to reclass that out of the town budget into shared costs. We initially got a very simple response, no. But I'm going to meet with him, and we're going to, we're going to build some consensus and some teamwork, and we're going to put it where it belongs in the budget, which will give some relief to that operating budget.
Another item, also very small in dollar amounts, is the Commission on, sorry, Commission on Disabilities, which is second page of this, kind of in the middle there, under Human So I recall voting to give them, I think, I think it was the $7,000 to work, to do the work they need to do. And so I just wanted to see if this, this dollar amount represents something that's going to be on a, on a go-forward basis, money they're going to have available for their, purpose of their mission.
Yeah. So there is $7,000 in that budget, correct?
Correct.
Yeah, so I think that they were going to use that money, if, correct me if I'm wrong, for the public outreach, the mailings, things of that nature.
Yeah.
So we've had discussions with them. They're happy with that number. They can use that number. I don't know where it goes next year. I think they're just, they need a one-year trial. But it does reflect what your board voted previously, if that answers your question.
It does, yeah. I just wanted to, I wanted to, actually, it half does, but you do have an answer. I want you to know if it was expected to be ongoing or if it's just this one year, but it sounds like this is a bit of a trial period, but there's no reason why in the future it wouldn't.
So this, that's a great question. This is actually a very active committee now. They've, they've turned very active in the last year. Educating staff too, you know? The towns need an ADA coordinator, and recently we had people listed as our ADA coordinator that really probably shouldn't be. So now we have the proper personnel, our Building Commissioner, the ADA coordinator. He's designated at that, as that. He knows the building code. Most of the ADA issues come from the building code. There are some street-related ADA issues, but he has engineers across the hall that he can ask questions about that with some sidewalks, ramp slopes, things of that nature. So I feel that this, this will be a forever type of thing, and it may just grow over time.
That's excellent, because I do remember the vote, I think, was, was a one-time vote for, because they wanted to do some work. So I saw in the budget, I was sort of reminded of that. I was like, actually, you know what? That makes sense. This really should be an ongoing expense because their work doesn't stop. So I appreciate, those were my two questions.
Thank you, Vice Chair, K.V. I'll move into Mr. Cora.
Well, I don't know, I don't know if it's, it's not, it's not questions because it'd take me forever to get answers. But I got, I just want to appeal to the intelligence on this board. This is our budget. They might take and use a budget team and stuff like that to prepare it. I did a budget. We didn't have a budget team. I didn't have a problem with it. But, you know, it's only math, and I guess there's new ways of doing it. A budget team is charged with producing a balanced budget that is to support services and staff that betterments the residents. That's what they're here for. They're not here to do comparables, to give people raises. And that, that really irked me because there's a process in this town for raises. And that, that really irked me, because there's a process in this town for raises. If you think you need a raise and you're a person that's employed by the town, there's avenues. There's your union, and then there's the town manager, if you're a person under contract. It is not up to a budget team putting together a budget to dole out raises and for us to sit here and accept it. We have the right to raise the taxes in this town 2.5%. Nobody ever says, well, maybe we'll just go 2%. The Cedar Hill has finally made money. I was on the finance committee, I was the one that told them, not gonna bond all this stuff for them down there, we're gonna give them the one shot, $200,000 to get all the stuff they needed. And it turned out good. They get some retained earnings, and what are we gonna do? We're creating new positions and giving out more raises. I always love the term hiring freeze. We had a person that said that to us, they're gone now, and I don't really care. But with a hiring freeze, you know what that becomes? Outrageous raises are given out. If you paid attention to the budgets in your time that you were on finance and saw where the raises went and jumped, in this budget, we're handing out more. Why? Your job got a little busy, I'm gonna give them a stipend. I hope when we go for the zoning person, we'll actually get a qualified, certified person, which the guy who left was not. And then I wasn't at the sweat that he went next door. Know why he went next door? He used us as a stepping stone, and instead of doing his job here, he was taking his courses to be a building inspector. Let's call a spade a spade, let's get it out on the table and see what's going on here. We jump to fill positions, just get them in there, fill them. Here's an opening. We're supposed to have job descriptions, we tailor-make the job descriptions to fit the person who's ill-qualified for it. This has gotta stop.
It has stopped, sir. I'm here.
Thank God.
I can't speak to history, I can only speak to where we're going from here. The new fiscal year is not for seven months, July 1st. If we don't budget it, we can't even have the discussion about whether something is meritorious or not. That we're budgeting an increase based upon the recommendations of the committee, only put the money in the budget should we reach that conclusion. If we evaluate that person who may be getting a step up, not a raise for the same position, but a step up, if we don't budget it, we can't have the discussion because there's no money there to give a raise. So I can assure you, although I, I have no control over what has happened historically, I, I'll promise you-
No, no, I'm, I'm trying to control what's still gonna try to happen. You, you're new in the gate, and I, and I, this is why I chose you, I trust you, I trust Mark.
Thank you.
But what I'm trying to say is, a budget team's job is not to look for raises for people in the, if some people do extra work, so be it. I, I just saw some extra work being done tonight, and gets done all the time, but I can't talk to that. There's no stipends given out, no pats on the back, just a tired person that comes home.
My God.
But I'll tell you, I see the same jumps in raises being given out. I'm on this board for a reason, to make sure that the residents are gonna get the best bang for their buck, and we have to make sure that happens. Right now, things are gonna be hard. We're balancing a budget with taking money from one place to support other places. And I agree with Steve, Mr. K.V., when he said, you know, we should be on a program to raise maybe the water in the sewer a little bit at a time. We sit flat, and then all of a sudden, it falls apart. You know, there's, there's gonna be a long wait for the South Stoughton Sewer to generate revenue here. When you see a permit pulled, that means nothing. Until that bill is paid, that's when we start making money. So that's far off. But I'm just looking at, how much more can you give? What's wrong with, with looking at things in a, in a different way? I mean, creating positions, there's some that have to be, I, for the most part, I'm not for it. And I'll say it again, and we'll get deep into it, but I can't single out people, but somebody got a raise last year, and we're looking to, because the budget team did comparables. It's not their job to do comparables. If I was employed by this town, and I thought it was worth a little bit more, I'd be talking to one of these two guys. And if they told me, I'm sorry, it's not in the cards, it's not in the cards. Somebody else told us they saved the town $143,000 because they didn't fill a position, but that person gave out $228,000 in raises. Because I'm good with math, and that's all it is. I don't care who it's making happy, it's all about math. And when you talk to people outside, that's what it's all about, is what they're paying in taxes. Let's raise this, let's do this, let's give out more raises, but don't worry, there's a fire station coming in the swamp, don't worry. And God knows what else we'll do. But that's, that's all I got to say. Once I go through this budget, I haven't had a chance to, because something happened personally, and I didn't have time to sit and inch it the way I did when I was on finance. But I will.
Well, that's okay, Mr. Cora, because we'll have ample time to review it next week, and probably another, in, in January-
I appreciate it.
-to finalize it.
Appreciate the mention.
And then, yeah, and then for my comments, I do agree with a code enforcer, because when I, when I walk through town and I see it myself, there are things that could be improved, but they just need some help. The other is an org chart. And I know you don't have the job descriptions now, you're working on it, but I would like to refresh my memory on, on how many people are in what department, and what exactly do they do, especially DPW, because I'm so far removed from that. And what I'm looking for is really span of control.
Yes.
Like, well, you know, how large are these departments? And, and I always hear that one position is being combined, and then, but, and then you're separating, and so it, it's, it's a lot of moving parts. So if I had an organization chart, as you're talking about the departments, then I have a visual of what you're actually, what the actual change will be.
I'm sure there'll be a detailed org chart with your budget submitted next week.
Okay, that's great. The next is health insurance. So we're self-insured, healthcare cost is going up everywhere. What can we do that's creative? I heard one thing was, well, increase premium, you know, that's the easy answer, but, or increase the deductible, increase the co-pay, but is there something else we could do? And I would like to hear what some of the options are, and, like a cost-benefit analysis. If we went in this direction, well, it's not really a savings, if maybe, you know, I'm sure there are options out there, I know what we're doing in our organization.
So if I may, Madam Chair, one of the budget proposals we're going to make to the board next Tuesday is providing an opt-out option of our healthcare program for any employee who wishes to take advantage of it. Deanna and I sent a note to other human resource people throughout Norfolk County, we got five responses. I had just started that initiative in Kingston before I left. The outsourced option, and it's an option, it's no, it's not a requirement, nobody will feel that way, is if they are in the program as a family or an individual, and they want to opt out of the program, we would pay them a three-year premium, three-year bonus, if you will, X amount of dollars per year. Let's say it's 25% of what our savings are. Because many, in many cases, employees here are married to schoolteachers, they're both in the system, they're on our program, and yet the school system, not in Stoughton, or anywhere, but does not offer that opt-out program. So if they moved over to the other employer's healthcare program, we save, this is hypothetical, we save $20,000, we give a three-year bonus to the employees of X amount, call it $5,000, 25%, and we net a $15,000 gain. Based on our analysis of husbands, wives, families, singles, I'm recommending $100,000 savings in healthcare, based upon how many we estimate will opt in. In addition to that, we know we've got a right through the legislation years ago to control plan design. So we can change some of the plan designs, and we'll have to do impact bargaining with the unions to do that, but we can also increase the employee contribution. It was really funny, this budget committee, my first day, said, Tom, you know what you just signed up to for Employees Match? It went up before you got here this morning. So they recommend, they are, employees are recommending that their match, their body into helping the town, that their match be increased to minimize the, not to minimize, to erase the deficit in medic, in medical insurance funding. So all of that's gonna be part of our proposal to you. I'm not trying to sell the opt-out program right now, the plan will be part of our budget recommendation. And it's a plan, we're not writing, I, I've known the concept for a long time, but we're gonna choose the best of those that we receive from other communities, where it's already been fully vetted by council.
Thank you very much.
We help to make that balance, we expect to make that balance in this budget.
And then my next item is spend some time tonight talking about the one-year capital items, especially the automobile, the pool of automobiles. Whenever we have a conversation about that in the past, it always seems to, well, we don't have enough cars to go around, or this car we need to replace. Well, if we had that, the, we, I was sold on the whole process that that would not happen, having a pool of cars and having them not needing repairs is, at the same time, would be a savings. But it seemed like somehow we got off track, and I don't know how or when. So if we, once we start talking about the capital items, then maybe the single-year capital items, that is, maybe that'll come up, and you can provide some context.
We've got the CD. In terms of new vehicles, it's only police, three police, one command staff and fire, and one for inspectional services. We're not doing any other vehicles across the town. And one of the reasons, I spent two and a half hours at DPW today, we are absolutely blessed with three very talented and very committed and very spirited mechanics. They're now repairing vehicles for departments outside of DPW. They're repairing those pool vehicles, the COA vans, they're repairing, not only repairing, doing preventive maintenance. So we think we can make the existing pool vehicles last a few more years without having to replace them because of a good PM, and a good PM program and an extraordinary group of mechanics.
So the pool concept is working? So like the assessors department, they have-
Take the car.
...a vehicle when they need to go out, and then-
And then park it when they go home. It is working.
Okay. Thank you.
Do you agree with that?
Yeah, yeah, I think, I think that the pool program, if I may, it's worked, been working really well. There's certain departments that you need the car kind of sitting there, right? Inspections. Nope, I need, I need an inspection. Well, we can't schedule that three or four days in advance. You need the car there. So we got three or four for inspectional services that do sit there. They get used quite often, they're very seldom sitting there, quite, quite honestly, but sometimes they'll, they'll sit there. The rest of the pool cars work fine, there's three or four other pool cars, the assessors has one, I believe the nurses have one. And, and the programs have been working great ever since your board put the policy in place, I think, seven or eight years ago. And let me remind your board, for those type of cars, every seven years, we're supposed to be replacing them. For police cars, I believe we have a three-year policy to replace. And I know the police department has been following that policy to the T. I think we've been stretching the policy a little bit with some of the other cars, because they're still in decent condition. I mean, some of the inspection cars, we have a van that we do our survey work in, it's probably a year or two beyond, but it's still functioning well, it's working, it's been maintained, so.
But it's another example, Madam Chair, of, of consensus building and collaboration. Everybody would love to have their own car assigned to them. It's just not necessary, and it's not affordable. So by making the life of these cars last a bit longer, because we have good maintenance programs and a good group of mechanics, and because Mark has done a wonderful job of getting people to communicate on their needs and their use, not everybody's gonna have a vehicle available to them, and I think that's good news for our taxpayers. We have no pool cars in this capital budget for next year. And they're all working fine. Gotta wash them, but they're all working fine.
Look forward to next week, when we'll have a deeper or another review of the departmental operational budget.
Look forward to that.
And where we are right now, the increase over last year is 4.1%. So that's the number that stays in my mind. And then we're gonna move on right now, were you gonna say something, Mr. Chisora?
No, it's all moved now, I'm just gonna, it's a little funny story.
Oh, okay, go with funny.
When I first started here, I know, it's, he's getting me to be more funny, I think, but, a little less serious, I'm beginning to be more funny, I guess, I don't know. The first year I started here, we used to get the hand-me-down police cars. Really nice, because you had a nice, fast car. But very seldom available to use, because that thing was already destroyed. So we couldn't never, we never had a car to use because it was in the shop being repaired. So now that policy's out, out the door, that there was obviously no policy. Now we have that policy in place, and we have reliable cars in place, so it's worked very well.
Is the funding car coming?
But we, but we don't have fun cars to drive anymore. We don't have old police cars. Thanks, Tom, appreciate it.
Okay. So we're gonna segue to the capital articles?
Jesus Christ.
[laughing].
You have that in your packet, the-
Is this the colorful, colorful one?
Yep, so I gave you, in your original packet that you have in your, when you got before the weekend, I gave you all the articles, right? So what we've been doing is we've reached out to the, the department heads over the last couple of months, and not just capital articles, I've been trying to form a spreadsheet that's very user-friendly, something that's dynamic and fluided, so we can keep on building upon as we go through this process. And I put, for example, in the beginning, all the yearly articles, right? The first 10 or 15 seem to be the same type of articles every year. Annual town meeting election, receive reports, unpaid bills, those kind of things. And then as you go through, you see colored lines. The colored lines represent a department. So for example, the blue is police department. And you'll see in their, in their, in their department, they only have capital. The capital items are listed capital next to the, the article. So the spreadsheet that you receive in your packet is a combo, it's capital articles and just regular articles, because we're looking at both at the same time, trying to build this warrant. So for example, in the police department, upgrade conference and community room, that's a capital item. Three marked cruises, capital items. An example of a non-capital item, but still costs the town money, right? It's a money item, would be, let's go with the town-wide lake management program, right? Not really a capital item, you're not buying a, an item, right? You're buying a service, right? You're treating your lakes. So that's $50,000. So to me, it's important not just to list capital items, but all the items that cost the town money, that actually have money associated with them. Another example of that would be, well, this leads to Mr. Gito's point earlier, the town hall parking, landscaping, and lighting improvements, right? That's an article I put forward. I believe there's a plan that you'll see soon, I think you, this board has seen it in the past. But generally, around town hall, there's a great opportunity, especially around the front on Pearl and on Porter Street, a pocket park situation, just like that beautiful pocket park that's near the school that just got constructed, where you have different type of landscaping with a nice fancy sidewalk, sitting areas, certain types of lighting, and maybe even messages for the community about our history, things of that nature, you can implement around the front of town hall. front of town hall. The same time, we shouldn't just stop there, we should look at the whole property. What do we need to do for parking? I physically drew a plan myself when I actually did engineering, which doesn't seem to happen anymore, but I drew the plan, and, that was funny. So, so, see? So it added like four or five parking spaces to the front of town hall, just in better, a better format for parking spaces, not just the parallel parking spaces along the front on a curve, which nobody can, if you actually parked there, you could never get as many parking vehicles in those spaces as there is marked. So now we're going to have angled parking spaces, if the board supports this article, along with landscaping, not just in the front of town hall, but around these areas where maybe by creating parking areas, we're creating a bump out or something. Let's put something there, a tree, some bushes, things of that nature. And it's not going to just be our engineering department putting a certain bush. You don't want, believe me, you don't want me landscaping your town hall. It's probably going to be those U's all over the place, it'd be horrible. So, see, that's funny, right? So now, what we have is an article in place that just funds the design. We got a quote from a consultant to design that exact project I just explained to you. Depending on what the cost comes out, next year you'll probably see maybe a CPC article that may be fun part of that. Sorry, I went off, maybe I was a little passionate about that one, one particular article, but...
Great, exactly.
Exactly. So that's generally how the format of this sheet works. I did break you one down at the request of our town manager, Coulter here. Just, I gave everybody a copy. Yep, I think you have it too, right, right there in front of you. Right in that packet, right there. Yeah. So this is just capital. So it's the sheet you got, just broken down to just showing the ones that say capital next to them, just to simplify it for you, because typically this board starts off with the capital items. So again, I think the point of tonight is just to kind of give you this, have you time to soak it in, understand it, maybe ask questions to department heads when they come in front of you, maybe come up with ideas you may want to put in here right away, right now. You may have an idea or two. I think last week, Steve, you had one about the polling stations, so I put it in the article list, not on the capital list. So we're trying to compile information from everybody. We've reached out to CPC, they're very active this year. Not on the capital items, we're not calling them capital items, but they have 10 articles this year, money articles, being funded by the CPC. I am looking for input from the board. To me, I personally like one spreadsheet opened up all the way, showing all the articles, as opposed to one just showing capital and one showing the other articles. I think it's easier to have one sheet, it's like your working warrant, and you're building it. Once you have a consensus on it, we actually start saying, "You know what? Our administrative people, Reggie, will take it on, start writing the articles up, forming a warrant for you, with all the backup information, like quotes, say there's a design, we've got the quote for the design as the backup. Any type of appropriate backup will build into the warrant for you." So as long as the board is good with this format, we'll keep on continuing forward with it. And I think that January 3rd and January 10th meeting, the detailed questions about the articles can be asked, can be asked to the department heads.
May I ask, Madam Chair, is there any specific capital categories, investments, that the board feels strongly should not be on here? If there's consensus on that, then we'll bring that forward tomorrow as we revise the budget. Or would you rather wait till the department head is here to answer questions on why they have this specific capital need in fiscal '24?
Let's wait until next week, because like voting machines, for the amount requested TBD, to be determined.
Right.
Some of the residents are complaining that they saw some struggles with the existing machines, it needed to be replaced, or they need more, or something, but it was having some, some issues. So I would like to talk about that, too.
I think that's great. So if we can get, the more time that goes by, the more backup information we can get. So maybe that discussion waits until not the last minute, but towards the end of the process as we collect the data.
Sounds good.
We'll address your issues.
I got a lot of issues.
Okay. I know.
Now, that's funny.
Through you, Madam Chair, to the town manager.
Yes.
Tom?
Mr. Coulter?
I'm so sorry.
Mr. Gito is...
I'm sorry, Lou.
Hi.
I was being distracted by the gentleman to my...
I know, he's, he's a distraction all the time. It's, it's hard to deal with him.
Yes, sir.
Not, not at all. I can send you some information. I'll just email you some stuff.
Appreciate that.
And things that, that I didn't really get into in the brief time that I...
I greatly appreciate that.
Okay, good enough.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Sounds good. So are we ready to, to leave the articles and go to the billboard policy? It was tabled from our December 13th Select Board meeting. And Mr. Tisdale, did you want to recap again? This is an existing contract, the use of the billboard, it just happens to be a benefit in the existing contract?
Yeah, I can brief you on this. I think, I believe at the last meeting we mentioned, correct me if I'm wrong, but the town actually has the rights to 28 hours of usage on this billboard, as part of a zoning board of appeals approval in the past for the sign. It's one of those big signs on the side of '24. There's other benefits built into the contract, they'll actually do graphic design and things of that nature. But it came to us through the S EOC committee initially, they wanted to utilize the sign. And before just saying, "Use the sign," we thought it would be wise to have a policy in place that formalizes the process. An application, an application and a policy. In front of you, you have that, that was in your package. I am looking at the policy, I believe Pam, I give credit to Pam, she generated a lot of this information, so I appreciate the work and effort she put into it. There's a, there's a pretty standard application in here, which I'm fine with. I do think we need to think about the policy and how this board wants to handle the usages of the sign. Do you want every application to come to your board, or do you want to delegate it to the town manager's office? My fear is that every month, you're going to get a lot of requests, once everybody's aware of this. So it's just something to consider. Other than that, there's some basic eligible messages. We're talking about public safety, community events, town-sponsored events, things of that nature. I suggest the board really look at that area, see if you want to expand upon that. Also, what type of people can submit the application, right? So department heads, boards and committee chairs, things of that nature. I think we need to keep it controlled, so it's not just anybody off the street submitting a request in. And that's my comments for now. I think generally, we're almost there, we just need to craft this policy. Once we roll into the board's comments into it, we can ask our town council to review the policy, formalize it, they'll probably, you know, pretty it up a little bit, put some legal language into it, and then we can be done with it.
All righty. So then I'll open it up to the board. Have you had a chance to review the policy? And did you have any additions? Or edits? Mr. Carr.
I, I looked at it, but I, I'm not really sure how we're going to decide what things go up there. Did I miss something in that?
So in the section eligible messages, I think that's on page, it's not page numbered.
Yeah.
But those are some ideas of eligible messages.
No, I understand that.
What was your question then?
The question was, when you get a lot of these things coming in, when people say, "I'd like to put this message up," who's going to say yes or no?
Oh, that's what we wanted to decide, if it was going to be the Select Board. You probably may not have heard Mr. Coulter, but he asked that question. Did it, is the control with the board, or did you want to delegate it to the town manager? That was one of the questions. If we delegate it to town, to the town manager, then he would be the, the voice, whether he uses the first N, the first person that applies, and it's on rotation, or however. We could also dig a little deep and put that timeline in the policy itself, put more control...
Thank you, you've answered my question.
Madam Chair, may I?
Sure, yes.
To the degree, ma'am, that it's our job to take work off the hands of the board members, I would strongly recommend that you let all applications go through the TM office. But because it's a message that stays up there that represents the whole town, I think you should at least see what's being approved prior to it being enacted. If there's a bad message up there, it's up there for a while. So I think that we should do the work and bring perhaps the choices, three choices, or if there's only one, that choice, the end product to this board, but prior to giving the applicant the go-ahead. So you know, you're never surprised driving up '24 and seeing a message that catches you off guard. Let us do the work and you make the choice.
And then, Mr. Carr, I think you were raising your hand as well.
I, I wanted it to, to end with us here.
Right.
That we would make, make the decision. I really didn't want to saddle them with any more work than they had to do. It's a pretty, I would think it would be a pretty simple thing to do, but, you know, you could get somebody that, "Oh, I want to, my cat's going to be 16, can I have, you know, put it up there?" You know, that's an automatic, you know, it's got to have substance. So I, I thought it would end with us.
I agree, ma'am, it should end with the board. That's your call. All I'm suggesting, Mr. Carr, is that let us do the work to bring to you the options. For instance, just like the clerks are working through this policy now.
Yeah.
It's got to be complete, and it's got to be accurate. So if we vet it so that everything is accurate, everything is complete, it's politically correct, for the lack of a better term, we'll bring those options to you. I think this board should make the decision. It's a, it's a statement from the leaders of our community. You should make the final call. I'm just suggesting, we as staff do the work for you and get it to you.
I couldn't disagree more, quite honestly. I think that we have more than enough stuff to do if we concentrate on the things that are really important. I don't think that it's unimportant to communicate, but I would rather do it on an exception basis and have the process work so that the town manager or someone, a designee, puts those things up. If there becomes an issue, we know that we need to deal with it differently the next time. But if we sit around here for 10 or 15 minutes, once a month, trying to figure out what's going to go on a billboard, we just have wasted 10 or 15 minutes on something that may be a budget issue, maybe a, another kind of thing that really needs to be done. We spend more of our time doing administrative kind of work than we do in terms of dealing with, with real issues that we are expected to be able to, to be dealing with. I mean, I don't want to get on a soapbox now, but we are behind on doing something that is terribly important, that we're not going to do for a month or two, that should have been done last April. So I just, I understand that we all like to be in control, but we ought to be in control of things that are important.
Thank you, Mr. Gito. Vice Chair Cavey?
Without, before talking to anybody, I was initially, had a very similar stance to Mr. Gito. I thought this is something that, that, you know, could be handled at the town manager's office, and I think it'd be handled well. But after hearing Mr. Coulter and also especially Mr. Carrera, something kind of, something else kind of crept into my thinking. And this is not something that I have a particular fear of anytime soon, but, you know, if you look at this policy and you say, "What, what could happen five, 10, 20 years down the road? What kinds of things could happen?" And, you know, given even my own experience with the, the town, I do think that having this decision made ultimately by only really one person, puts at risks the, the relationship the employees of the town have with the town manager. As I said, I don't think that's necessarily a problem now, but if they're, if, if we ended up in a place where there's the kind of tribalism we've seen in, in the past, where, you know, the friends of the town manager get their messages, and for the ones who don't, they don't get to put any messages up, and their departments are not given as much airtime as, as others, I think ultimately being able to appeal to, to the Select Board and to the public at large, and making it a public statement that this is something I believe ought to be up there, I think offers the departments a, you know, reason to believe that they're getting a fair hearing on this, and it offers the, the town manager an opportunity to bring these things forward, advocate for or against them, but also at the end of the day, I think it gets aired in a way that, where, you know, the, the greatest chance of, of equity exists for, for all. It is a little bit of a time commitment for the, for the board, I agree. It takes, it takes, and, and there's a part of me that wishes I wasn't saying this, because I don't want to necessarily constantly be talking about what's going to go up on billboards. But I also see a case where, you know, if people feel like they're not able to get heard, they're not able to put messages up they think are important, that ultimately could, could undermine, you know, morale within the departments in a way that I think that we can, we can just, by putting a policy in where ultimately we, a five, a five-panel board of independent people are able to prioritize these and say yes or no to them, it prevents that from happening. So I see a strong reason to, to do it. Now, you know, is the protection in place worth the time commitment? That I really don't know. And, you know, maybe not now, but maybe sometime in the future we will wish to be done this? I'm not sure.
Madam Chair, may I, may I respond?
Yes.
In, I hope, a positive way. I understand what you're saying, Mr. Cavey, and I don't disagree with that. But I think there's a way to deal with that that doesn't force us to deal with things every month. Maybe we should review the last six months' worth of things that go up on a billboard, or do something of that nature, or do it annually, and modify. And if we see something that's outrageous, maybe we would do it faster than that. But I just think that there's got to be a way to do that in a way that, that provides some control and oversight without having to take on the responsibility of doing it on a daily, a monthly basis.
Madam Chair, may I respond?
Yes, Vice Chair Cavey?
Through you, Madam Chair. Mr. Gito, I'm, I agree with what you've just said entirely, and I think that if there is some way to sort of safeguard the things I'm concerned about, and also not have to spend every meeting looking through advertisements, count me in. So I'm, I'm on board with that. I'd like to maybe just, if somebody has a clever idea right now, great, it is a little bit late. Otherwise, it might be good to, to spend a little time just thinking it over and revisit it. I don't want to kick this can down the road too much further. But, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Vice Chair Cavey. Mr. Carr?
I think, I think we can handle it pretty easy. Go with Mr. Coulter's idea. The board will verify the end. It can be just put on the consent agenda as A, B, C, and we vote the whole thing, and it's over. I mean, we, we picked him to be the guy, he picks what he thinks is right, he supports us and tells us, and it falls under A, B, and C, and we just vote the consent agenda, it's over. At least we know what's, we can, if we meet somebody on the street and they go, "I can't believe you put that there," and I go, "Well, yeah, I can," you know, so...
Mark did it.
Yeah, Mark did it.
Watch out for the message right before the time Angela Stoughton...
Watch out for the message right before the town manager leaves.
And I'll, I'll recognize Mr. McCrisky.
Well, I guess it'd be very short. I would just urge just to take a look at the charter. The charter is, we are policymaking board, the policy's in place. These types of things should be handled by the administration, you know, as a, as a function of the government. So I think that we're getting into dangerous areas, that if we start managing this, it's, what else do we decide we're going to manage? Everybody on this board has mentioned the charter here or there, you know, some more than others. And this is one the charter does not give us that authority to do. We set a policy, the policy gets put in place, and it's maintained by the administration. So that's my only thoughts, and I started, Adam.
Okay. Any final thoughts? And then, a motion? I'm open to accepting a motion. I could also tell you my views. My views are that we worked really hard to, to vet a policy. We, this has been a contract that has implemented and ongoing for a little while, and we weren't fully using all of the benefits in the policy. I, I don't want to kick the can down the road anymore. It's basically limited to department heads, boards, Stoughton boards, commissions, and committees. I think, I really believe they pretty much understand what our mission is, and we're defining Stoughton as a welcoming community. The eligible messages are about public safety, public health. A lot of time, we talk about, well, we didn't know things were going on, like the Glenn Echo ribbon-cutting ceremony. Well, this would be a place to say, hey, Glenn Echo grand opening, you know, it's something positive. Or if we're talking about the, the depot, what is the use? You know, there's an event going on there, you know, so that would be considered welcoming. I also recognize that our town manager, Mr. Coulter, is, he suggested a process, and if he comes to the board, puts it on the consent agenda, and we can approve it, like we have, before we leave tonight, we have two more things to do. One is the consent agenda that was supposed to be at 7:50 PM. You know, it goes rather quickly unless you see an issue with it and you want to pull it. So I think the, the process that Mr. Coulter outlined is fair, especially for going into something new we haven't done before, because we could always change it later if we find that, hey, it didn't work out like we thought it would. So, so I'm open to a motion, please?
I'll take a swing at the pitch here, and I'm happy to make any friendly amendments for anybody who thinks I, I've made an error. But I move that we adopt the Route 24 electronic billboard use policy with the following addition, that the, the policy authorized the town manager to make determinations of content for the board, and that those, those decisions are ultimately approved by the Select Board via consent agenda.
Thank you. And you said you would accept a friendly amendment, and that my amendment would be that it is reviewed by our town council, because maybe he has some additions, some edits, some amendments to make it a better product.
Perfect. So the, the...
Because he hasn't seen it yet.
Oh, sorry, yes, that the billboard use policy be reviewed by town council. Yeah, absolutely.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No.
Was that Mr. McCrisky that said no?
Oh, Mr. Gito.
Oh, Mr. Gito, there's no. And I vote yes. So that's four to one vote. The motion carries. Thank you. Moving to our next item, which is the capital project plan priority survey results. Did we already talk about that? Or did you?
I can just summarize this real quick, to be honest with you, if you, if you don't Again, thanks to Pam McCaffrey for setting up this survey. As you recall, maybe about, I don't know, five or six weeks ago, this exact item was in front of your board to discuss special capitals projects. The one thing I was, we were missing, I felt, in the, in the capital plan, was we always had our town capital items pretty solid. Tried to work with the schools to get an idea of what their capital items are, but then part of the project, part of the, the capital plan that's missing is those special projects that really should come from the board, right? Or strongly from the town manager recommending it to the board, like a train station depot use. What are we going to do with the train station? The armory? Are we going to make the Lucius Clap building ADA accessible? Those special things, you know? They should be cut a funnel through the board. So you picked, your board picked five or six items and asked Pam to do a Google form survey. She sent it to all the town meeting reps, did a mailing, and the water bill, I believe, and we have the results in front of you tonight. And the items that were on that survey, excuse me, were online permitting software, renovating and expanding the police station, ADA improvements to the Lucius Clap building, right the street over here, that way. Armory building stabilization and selective demo, Town Hall parking and landscaping improvements, and train station renovation and reuse. In summary, projects were ranked one to five, right? The first two were very important and important, and the way Pam summarized the data is very effective, I think, to tell you what the public's thinking about each project. She essentially took all the projects that were ranked, the percentage of the projects that were ranked important and very important, and took that percentage and added them up. So for online permitting software, you had 36%. Renovate, expand police station, 40%. ADA improvements to Lucius Clap, 34%. Armory building, demo, selective demo, stabilization, 27%. Town Hall parking and landscaping, 27%. And then the, the big winner of the night was the train station renovation reuse. So that's clearly the number one priority of the, the public out there. And I, I believe, you know, this was going to be a, a guide for you, I think Steve said it at that meeting, it's, it's, doesn't mean you're going to follow this list to the T, but it gives you some input and data to make your decisions. I think everything on this is positively received. You didn't get anything with 5 or 10%, right? So I think you got positive feedback on all the items that you put on this list. So I think going into these next meetings that we have, strongly consider what, what your board wants to put into this, as a special capital project into our plan. And you can use some of this information that Pam did.
That's really good work.
Yeah, it is.
So no decision on that will be made tonight. This is just FYI informational. The last item on our agenda is the consent agenda items. Does anyone want to pull a consent agenda item? It's payroll and BO warrants, and then open meeting minutes of November 15th.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. I'll accept a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. Happy holidays, everyone. Merry Christmas for those that celebrate Christmas. See you next time. See you on Tuesday, December 27th. Thank you.